Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Cersei.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Pleased to be.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember, just to let everyone know, Councilmember Dibala is unable to join us tonight because she is traveling in participation, participating in a National League of Cities event, and we greatly appreciate her representing the city in that endeavor. So, tonight, just gonna triple check, we are going to have, in terms of changes to the agenda and the scheduling updates, we are going to postpone the resolution designating resident agent for service of process. That is something that we will cover during next, during next week's, during next week's meeting. So, tonight, what we will cover will be a presentation from our Housing and Community Development staff on the Public Space Management Plan. We will also have a series of work sessions tonight, so just ask for folks to bear with us. A work session on the FY 2024 Budget Amendment Number One, Recommended Amendments to the City Code, Chapter 6.16 Landlord-Tenant Relations, and Chapter 6.36 Unsafe Buildings: Public Nuisance Abatement. We will also have a work session on the proposed contract with Ministries United, Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, MUST, to oversee the Emergency Assistance Program. We will have a readout from our Council Subcommittee on Boards and Committees, Board and Committee Appointment Recommendations. We will discuss a resolution in support of the Benefit Corporation for Africa, as well as a work session on the resolution designating Acting City Manager. Now, I'm gonna read out a couple of our upcoming agendas, because we are nearing the end of our sessions before recess. We've already covered for tonight, but on Wednesday, July the 26th, we will be meeting at 7:30. We will have two presentations. One is the Urban Forest Managers Annual Report, as well as the, an update on the status of the library. We will have a series of voting items. First reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 6.16 Landlord-Tenant Relations, and Chapter 6.36 Unsafe Buildings: Public Nuisance Abatement. First reading ordinance approving FY 2024 Budget Amendment Number One. Single reading ordinance approving execution of a contract with Ministries United, Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, MUST, to oversee the Emergency Assistance Grant, Emergency Assistance Program. And then resolutions appointing members of, members to boards and committees. We will also tentatively have slated resolutions appointing, designating Acting City Manager, as well as voting on the resolution designating resident agent for service of process. We will also have work sessions. The first will be a Minor Master Plan Check-In. The second will be a City Manager Search Process Update and Search Form Selection. We will also have a work session on Youth Council Appointment Recommendations. And then our last meeting, before we go on recess, is on Wednesday, August the 2nd. Will start at 7:30. We will have a voting session. The second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 6.16 Landlord-Tenant Relations, and Chapter 6.36 Unsafe Buildings: Public Nuisance Abatement. The second reading ordinance approving FY 2024 Budget Amendment Number One. A resolution appointing the 2023-2024 Youth Council, as well as a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for an executive search firm for recruitment of a city manager, as well as a resolution providing for the City Council's Summer Recess, and that is from August the 3rd through September the 6th. We will also have a presentation on the Quarterly Financial Report. And also, just a final work session from our Subcommittee. They will present, this is just an update on the City Manager's Search, the process, and what to expect. The next item is a readout from our Wednesday, July 12th closed session. This is just a summary of that, and I will read it aloud. "The City Council convened at 6:00 PM in the auditorium of the Tacoma Park Community Centers, 7500 Maple Avenue, to vote to convene in closed session to discuss matters related to collective bargaining negotiations and receive legal advice. The session was closed pursuant to Annotated Code of Maryland General Provisions, Article, Section 3-305B7 and 9. Presence was the Mayor, Mayor Cersei, Councilmembers Fulcher, Dibala, Gibson, Hansak, and Small. Councilmember Small can move to convene in closed session. Councilmember Hansak seconded the motion. Vote for Mayor Cersei. Councilmembers Fulcher, Dibala, Gibson, Hansak, and Small. Absent was Councilmember Siemens. The City Council met in the hydrangea room for the closed session. Presence was Mayor Cersei, Councilmembers Fulcher, Dibala, Gibson, Siemens, Hansak, and Small. Acting City Manager Hubanks, Eric, Eric Bodak, Human Resources Director Cannon, Labor Attorney Wanznak, and City Clerk Carpenter. The council was briefed on the status of negotiations with the city's two unions, UFCW Local 400, and ASME, A-F-S-C-M-E. The council provided direction. The closed session was adjourned at 7:30 PM." Next, we don't have any for-the-record items tonight, and we also, due to the modification to the agenda, do not have any voting items tonight. So, now, we're going to move to general public comments. Do we have any general public comments tonight?
Good evening. Thank you. I am Paul Gunter, a resident of Ward 1 since 1991. I've served on the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. On June 6, 2023, four committee members received an email from the City Clerk Office reminding us that our terms expire on June 30. It included a welcoming note, "We hope that you will continue your service and attach the application form." We four complied and reapplied. The council is also aware of the new application from a highly regarded resident requesting council appointment to the Nuclear Free Committee. So, we are disappointed by the July 16th email from Councilmember Dibala that the city subgroup on boards and committees will recommend tonight that the council pass over confirmation of all five applicants, effectively disbanding the Nuclear Free Committee. Their expressed reason is that the committee doesn't have enough members or display diversity. I appeal to you to, I appeal to you to confirm that these five applicants to rejoin are the still-seated member of the constituents' six up to nine members. So, as to the charge of the lack of diversity, I have the statement of Will Allen DeProul, who writes, "I understand that the council is concerned with the diversity of the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee, and they may believe that no progress has been made towards diversifying the members of the committee. However, I wish it to be known that I, William Allen DeProul, recently appointed to a now-expired partial, partial, partial term, bring the following elements of diversity to the committee. I am of a mixed-race background. I am a member of the LGBTQ+ community, and I am from a family with the same-sex parents. It is often a point of frustration to me that these types of diversity go unlooked, simply because they are not visually presenting. I hope that you will keep this in mind when you discuss the committee going forward." Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any general public comments? Come on down.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Linda Pence Gunter, 302 Grant Avenue, former member of the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. I understand that a recommendation by a subgroup of the council will be made tonight not to renew memberships in the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. This would leave one active member and effectively abolish the committee. According to the city's Article 8 on Advisory Committees, the Nuclear Free Committee is tasked, among other duties, to review city contracts, purchases, and investments, and oversee the city's compliance with the Nuclear Free Zone Act, first established in 1983, and for which Tacoma Park is internationally renowned and respected. However, this mandate has been confused and potentially weakened by a council decision last year to quietly excise all references to the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee from the Nuclear Free Zone Act. This followed attempts in 2021 to delete other key aspects of the act and to eliminate the Nuclear Free Committee. This latter was widely opposed, including by the city-appointed Task Force on Sustainable Investment. Tacoma Park is fortunate to have residents well-versed and interested in the subject of nuclear disarmament, six of whom are currently willing to serve on the Nuclear Free Committee. Why is the council spending time trying to eliminate such an obvious asset? Councilmembers have reiterated that the city will not abandon Tacoma Park's Nuclear Free Zone status, but effectively rendering the Nuclear Free Committee obsolete will be perceived publicly as a weakening of the city's interest in and commitment to a Nuclear Free world at a time when the global nuclear peril is at its most heightened. Tacoma Park was the first U.S. city to declare its compliance with the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, a declaration that was the initiative of the Nuclear Free Committee, and for which the committee, for which the city received an international award. Not only is it essential that the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee stay in place, it must be allowed to carry out its oversight duties as enshrined in Article 8 in the municipal code. Without such citizen oversight, how can we be sure that this, or a future, less-progressive council, will not amend, further weaken, or even eliminate our Nuclear Free Zone Act, considered the strongest still in existence in the U.S.? The role of the Nuclear Free Committee exemplifies citizen engagement and government transparency. That's something the city should be proud of and encourage. The recommendation coming before you is ill-judged and ill-timed, and I urge you to reject it."
Thank you. Do you have any other general public comments tonight? Come on down, Mr. Hubner.
Good evening. Thanks for all you're doing. I see you guys out there, gals and guys, out there all the time. My name is Paul Hubner. Hope you're having a good evening. I want to thank the mayor and the councilmembers for holding last night's community outreach meeting about the Minor Master Plan. Yet, I came away with many questions that were not fully addressed, and a concern that these plans had not been widely shared with the community members who will be most affected. My questions are, what is the total number of square feet for development in the proposed plan? Why is any parcel acceptable as CRT as opposed to CRN? And please define the differences. How many studies, if any, have been done on the impact on schools, on traffic, on stormwater management, on green space, and of the impact on the current affordable housing in Tacoma Park? How many meetings and how often has the staff met with the county planning board and their staff, and where can we find these notes and conclusions from the meetings? What are the absolute parameters for keeping all existing affordable housing units safe? What are the metrics and numbers for any new housing units? Why does the plan extend beyond the Adventist Hospital site? How many dollars will be dedicated by the county who is proposing this plan, and how much will be required from developers to pay for the needed infrastructure and city services? What is the rationale for relocating city facilities that are currently under or proposed for construction, like the police station and the community center? Why not build new, separate facilities when the plan proposes to increase the population by 1/3rd? I'm talking here about recreational facilities. In addition, we need each member of this council to declare their position on the Minor Master Plan as proposed. I would advocate that the city demand as much as possible to increase the level of affordable and missing-middle-income housing to 25%. We're all in, we are, if we are all nearly, if we're to nearly double the size of the city, we should advance more worthy goals, not just the county minimum of 12%. I'd also like to see an in-depth issue of the city newsletter dedicated to this singular issue that will so dramatically affect such a large part of our community and potentially threaten the homes of so many of those most in need. Absent a much broader, in-depth involvement of the residents, especially those most affected, I can only hope that this council rejects the current proposal. Anything less would be another giveaway to renegade development and to the likely displacement of so many. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public?
You're free to send your comments into the council. However, one, I just want to ask members of council to, to respect what we're, what we're doing, and also, yeah, no worries. Mr. Hubner, if you have a version that you want to share, or if you would like to email it to us separately, you can. No, no, it's all right, Paul.
No, it's fine. It's all right.
Mayor, apologies. I just didn't, there was, something I didn't understand. I just wanted to read it.
Yep. I want to also just encourage again, and I know this is also a little out of, out of cadence, for folks who have a number of comments regarding the master plan. One of the things that we did talk about last night was the ways in which you can submit those comments, and we definitely want to encourage people who have comments, very specific comments regarding the contents of the plan, to please submit those to the county so that they could be as a matter of public record. So, I do want to reinforce that, to ensure that folks who come in who have comments to the council regarding the master plan know that it is really important for them to also submit those comments into the county. And thank you so much for your patience. And so, we will turn things over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Denise Jones. I live on Maple Avenue, near Sligo Creek and Essex House Apartments. I want to thank you for the public meeting that you had last night, and unfortunately, I had a prior engagement. Else, I would have been there, for sure. I don't have prepared comments tonight, but I will be sending you some information. I do want to thank Paul for all those wonderful questions that he asked, all of which I co-sign on. But I did want to stand here as a resident of Maple Avenue to speak to you about the personal impact that the extension of the Minor Master Plan to Maple Avenue may have. And I'm, I'm, I'm concerned. I'm greatly concerned, because it will transform the, the community that's there on the end of Maple from, from this building down. And I don't understand why Maple Avenue was included, but I, I do want to let you know for certain that there is a community that is there. And I don't want the loss of the public land that's at the corner there of Sligo Creek Parkway and Maple Avenue to be gone. That's our backyard. We're not single-family home dwellers. That is our backyard. And I, I just want you to know that, that encroachment on Maple Avenue will surely change the diversity on Maple Avenue that's there. There are many people who, for whom, hundreds of families that are along that, this stretch of Maple Avenue. And if I remember correctly, from a previous work that I was trying to, to do in protecting affordable housing here many years ago, I think there are almost 1,000 homes that are on Maple Avenue. And those families, they, they should have some protection, you know, for their homes and not be forced out. And I am not convinced at all, for many of the questions that Paul Hubner proposed, I am not convinced yet that we have a handle on how those families will, you know, their residences will be protected. That matters to me and for what we say, who we are here in Tacoma Park, greatly. And I am, I'm actually advocating, if there's any chance at all to even push back the September meeting, I don't know if that's possible, but I definitely would agree with Paul that we should have a newsletter that is devoted to ensuring that everybody in the city has the information. Because I can tell you, that's not the case with my neighbors along Maple Avenue. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other general public comments?
So, good evening. My name's Jacqueline Moore, and I live in Ward 2. The July 18th meeting regarding the Minor Master Plan for Tacoma Park sounds like it was a bit of a fail. There were no people of color who asked questions. Whatever methods were used to try to increase participation were not effective. So, what are the city's plans to increase participation by non-white residents and residents who are of a lower socioeconomic status who will be greatly impacted by the changes in the Minor Master Plan? It's also quite apparent that there are a number of items that haven't been thought through, but which must be addressed before pushing forward. Here are a few that come to mind. Stormwater management. Thousands of new people generating waste will strain the existing stormwater systems. There will be more impermeable surface. Damage to roads and sidewalks. There's still no viable mechanism in place to deal with getting developers, builders, and flippers to pay for the damage they sometimes cause during construction. Police. What are the plans for the Tacoma Park Police Department? Will there be more officers being hired and more vehicles and equipment being purchased? Where will these new officers be housed? There's already a space crunch in the existing police headquarters. Schools. Piney Branch Elementary School is not at the front of the queue for being renovated, and neither is Rolling Terrace Elementary School. The two schools were the bulk of the younger children in Tacoma Park are enrolled. Public Works. Are there plans in place to deal with the increases in the waste created by new residents? The trash removal and recycling systems currently in place are not going to be able to cope with the increase. Where will the new equipment necessary to service new residents be stored? Library. Will the renovated Tacoma Park Library be able to handle more patrons that will come along with an increase in population? Speaking of the library, how are those permits coming along? Here's the data from the Department of Permitting Services. Sediment Control Permit, application June of 2021, status in progress. Flood Plane District Permit, application March of 2023, status in progress. Commercial Building Permit Number One, application May of 2019, status voided. Commercial Building Permit Number Two, application June of 21, status in progress. Commercial Building Permit Number Three, application August of 2021, status in progress. Demolish/Remove Permit, application January of 2023, status in progress. Electrical Permit, application July of 2019, status in progress. Fence Permit. The fence permit is from 2010, so there does not appear to be a valid and updated fence permit, even though a fence has been erected around the construction site. Plumbing Permit. There's no evidence of an application for a plumbing permit. So, reunification and rent stabilization. Now that Montgomery County has passed rent stabilization legislation that will not sunset, perhaps we need to think about reunification with Montgomery County. The things that make the city special, for example, the Nuclear Free Zone Committee, are being undercut and are undervalued. We can't apply for cool things that the county has to offer, such as money to cover the cost of installing rain gardens via the Rainscapes Rewards Rebate Program on personal property. At some point, we need to ask, what's the point of being independent from the county? It seems like the city has lost its mojo.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
It's not a general comment, it's particularly to the agenda you have today on the resolution proposed. So if I may, I need a little more time, five minutes if it's possible.
I will grant you five minutes.
Thank you.
Can we reset the clock, please?
Hi, everyone. How you doing? Good to see you. My name is Tababu Asafah. I live on 7720 Carroll Avenue. I'm very active in this city. I've lived and raised my, my children here. For the last 20 years, I've worked hard to introduce a new initiative called Benefit Corporation for Africa, and inspired by the Benefit Corporation legislation Jamie Raskin enacted in the state of Maryland, today a law in 38 states. The first thing I would like to tell you, this is not a business. This is an initiative, which is a hybrid of profit, nonprofit-for-profit, that aspires to leverage the power of business to address the most pressing challenge we face, not only in Africa, here in our communities. And we've worked hard to introduce this to all the stakeholders, and I'm happy to tell you, in the last 12, 13 years, over thousands of our residents, from a high school student to a member of Congress, have supported and, and contributed to the development of this initiative. It's a community-public-private partnership. So I want you to pay really, really attention to the fact that it is a policy, a new policy, that aspires to leverage the power of business to address community-based, to advance community-based initiative. So that is the first point I'd like to emphasize. The second one, Jamie Raskin's had hosted a congressional briefing in 2021 to introduce this idea to members of Congress. Now it's ready to fly. I have currently submitted a request to Senator Chris Van Hollen, Congressman Glenn Ivy, and Jamie Raskin to host the second congressional briefing to present this idea to the black, Congressional Black Caucus, so that we can submit it as an amendment to, to address, there is an initiative called Africa Growth Opportunity Act, that's a U.S. policy towards Africa. We're presenting it as an amendment to renew AGWA when it comes for an extension. So the reason that it took 20 years, or 12 for the most part, is because it is an initiative, it's a new idea, it's going to leverage the power of business to change the world. In fact, this is the next best thing, next to the Mohammed Nus micro loan, that has the power to change the lives of millions of people. In fact, we're inspired by him. Mohammed Nus gave small women in rural area a little money to, to invest, and we're bringing producers, farmers, in here to compete in this market. The first model, Blessed Coffee, provides an opportunity for 60,000 small coffee farmers who are going to miss $25 per farmer, which is 1.5 million. We're going to match up with another 1.5 million with our community here and open the first people-owned roasting facility in the land we call America. By the way, if you close your eyes and open it in 20, you will see Blessed Coffee in every corner. But Jamie Raskin's once said, Seattle has Starbucks, and we do have a Blessed Coffee. So I gave my life to this thing because it's not a business, because it's going to change lives. It's going to change lives. And Tacoma Park is a place where this thing was invented and created and implemented. And it's about time our, our city takes ownership and leadership. By the way, last December, President Biden hosted an African Leadership Summit, invited over 46 presidents to attend. At the end of the day, they allocated $55 billion to invest in such an, such a model. In 2014, I had a forum right here. One of the persons that I invited, a similar entrepreneur, was a lady who went to Ghana, sourced share better from 30 women, and she was struggling like I was struggling. At the summit, she got $1 million from Prosper Africa and $600,000 donated by the government of DC for her to open the first roasting, I mean, factory to produce their products. We have a leveraging point to get money from federal agencies, a mandate to implement the 55, distribute the $55 billion so that we can have local economic development. And by the way, we created the initiative, modeled the first prototype, and the third thing we want to do is we want to inspire other immigrant, other impact investors in our city to leverage the power of community business, community economic development, to change the world. So I hear, I'm here to emphasize and overemphasize, this is about changing the world, this is about leveraging the power of business to bring history to the world. And I'm happy, I'm happy we're doing it from Tacoma Park. And as I was a kid back home in Ethiopia, once I remember, I read, I read an article about the peace, the war movement, I was 12 years old, and there's one article that says, UC Berkeley, Tacoma Park, Maryland, and Madison, Wisconsin, a progressive city. I want some kid somewhere someday to read about this article that will be inspired. With that, I thank you for considering it, and it's about time you stand behind us, lead us into this new world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for, for members in the community, Tababu did request extra time through council member seminars. Do we have any other general public comments tonight?
Good evening, members of the council and city clerk, city manager. Thank you. My name's Mark Sherman. I live on Hancock Avenue. And I came tonight to share with you a concern that stems from the Fourth of July Parade and that I've shared with my council member. It has to do with what occurs every Fourth of July, which is that no parking signs are placed on the perimeter of the block on which I live, bounded by Grant, Hancock, Lee, and of course Carroll. Even though there's no staging that occurs on Grant Avenue or Hancock Avenue, and only a little bit on Lee. And so on the day of the parade, I was up at 5:45 and spoke to one of two police officers who were on the street doing their best to get residents to move their cars before the 6:00 AM deadline, to find someplace else to park or risk being towed. There's no justification for that ban on Hancock or Grant, and only a small justification on Lee, where there's maybe half a dozen vehicles staging. I've been in touch with the Chair of the Fourth of July Parade Committee, and I just wanted to let you know that this is a concern for my residents, my neighbors, I should say. I myself don't have a car, but my neighbors do. They don't have private driveways, we're renters, and if you don't have a spot in the official parking lot of the apartment complex, the street is where you park your car. So the Fourth of July should be a celebration for everybody, not a punishment for happening to live on that block. And I encourage you to monitor and be involved in the discussions so that this time next year, my neighbors are not at risk. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments in the room?
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Budget Amendment Number One includes various items characterized as carryovers of unused or unspent funds. While it's true that the funds were not spent on those specific items, they may well have been spent in other ways, for example, to cover greater than budgeted staff expenses. I hope that before the council votes on the amendment, you'll get information on how fiscal year '23 revenue compared with fiscal year '23 expenses, to see if the funds are truly unused. The revenue and expenses figures need not be audited. I'm confident that staff will remind you that any figures provided now are not audited. Even if the funds are available, I hope the council will carefully review the proposed carryovers. The carryovers have their origins in the budget process that started in early 2022. The city's situation has changed since then. Our understanding of the situation has changed since then. And a majority of the council membership has changed since then. If a project has been difficult to accomplish, it may be best to let it go. This is especially true since Budget Amendment Number One would increase the shortfall of budgeted revenue from expenses by about $100,000. One specific budget amendment item. On February 15th, the city council, the city announced that effective February 13th, 2023, City Manager Jamal Fox resigned from his position as the City Manager for the city of Tacoma Park. The budgeted amendment includes $31,950 of severance pay, which I'd expect for a firing rather than a resignation. I hope the council will clarify whether it was a firing or a resignation. If it was a resignation, I hope severance pay will be removed from the budget amendment. If it was a firing, I hope the council will tell us why. If a nondisclosure agreement precludes doing so, I hope the council will let us know that and let us know why the agreement was made. Thank you.
Do we have any other general public comments in the room? Do we have any public comments virtually? No. Okay. Wonderful. So next, we're going to move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments tonight? Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do try to intend to, intend to try to comport myself to the point of time. I did want to say a couple of things about the processes by which this council has been working on any number of things and the difficulties associated with them. And I'd say that there is like some institutional things that are normative to being in Tacoma Park, and then there are like policy goals that are subjective to whoever it is that is up here. And the cool thing about it historically has been that the marketing says things like weird and groovy and words that a lot of different people can get behind. I think, though, that if you think about the two things that are in juxtaposition here today, at least during this part of the conversation, between it being the Nuclear Free Committee and then sort of a socioeconomic micro-business opportunity framework, that it's kind of an interesting analysis of the progress of being progressive. And, and so I do want to make sure that, that any attempts to try to paint this council or this city with too broad a brush about the proverbial mandates that the city carries off into the universe are tempered by the fact that as we move into a new framework and a new opportunity with any number of things, it is entirely reasonable to discuss the benefits and burdens of those things and which things we're going to keep in shape and form. I think it is sort of difficult when there are fewer opportunities for the community committee staff who have dedicated themselves to these endeavors to interact formally. It makes it difficult, and when you have vacuums, people, it's easy to make assumptions. And I would like to say that I'm certain that there's no temperament for nuclear weapons to be sorted through this place, and there's no temperament for people to enjoin thoughtful participation on these issues. But when you're reflecting upon where you're going to put resources and attention and where interest and hope and future things are, you do have to balance who got their pieces of the pie early and who didn't. And, you know, you elect people to do that, and we're going to try and do that. As far as the, the streets go, more power to you. And it seems unreasonable to me, but I don't know.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I just first want to make an announcement of a, an event, spontaneous play event, which is being cosponsored by, led by Let's Play America, that's this Saturday, July 22nd, from 10 to noon at, at a Sligo Mill Park. And it's free. It's for kids and everybody. It's climbing, cornholes, balloons. So I encourage anybody from Ward Three and nearby to come on by this Saturday, 10 to 12, to Sligo Mill Park. And then I'll just comment briefly on a couple of the statements made with regard to minor master plan. I, and I believe most of my, my colleagues here are trying to figure out the best way to move forward with getting information to, to the residents and for us to play our role, which I personally think, our role meaning the council, developing some sort of vision, maybe some guardrails. I'm not sure what it is, but we're still in the process, I'm still in the process of figuring out how best to, to frame our, our participation. We are not a, just, we're not just riding along with what the county is saying. We have, we have an important role, I think, to represent our residents and appreciate the effort that was made yesterday with the two wards, four and five, to, to pull, to pull together some of those questions and answers, and I think we need to do more. Thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher?
I want to thank especially some of the Ward One members that I say have come out tonight to talk. And, you know, thank you very much, Mr. Sherman. I know that you're working, you know, with Tara from the Fourth of July Committee, and I hope that you're enjoying some of those connections that you're making as you're doing that, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. And then my council members that are new here and I have talked about the learning curve, and I think this is the first time that Arthur David Olson has said something about the budget where I didn't have to research it as soon as I went home, like I understood it the first time. So that, that's how long it takes to catch up to Arthur David Olson. For a new member, it's eight months. So, so thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. The Tacoma Park Elementary School PTA is having an event this Sunday from 10 to 12. It's a popsicle event for new kindergarteners to come and meet other new kindergarteners. I'll be there with Girl Scouts, and I would love to have conversations with Ward One members or any other community members while you're there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight, and particularly Ward Five residents, Mr. Tababu and Ms. Jones. It's, it's really nice to see you here and hear your thoughts on, on these issues, and particularly hearing from you, Ms. Jones, about, you were the one voice, I believe, from that part of my, my ward. I, I will tell you, I worked really, really hard to try to see if there was a way to get folks up from Essex House. We had the Rise Youth that were working with us hand-deliver a bunch of different flyers to people's doors. We were so, so lucky to have their time there from the county. And, and then I went personally over to Essex House and spoke to residents and Ms. Mary and Mr. Kenny as well, as well as having spoken to other folks within the building. I am still trying, and I welcome more ideas on how to ensure that everybody is reached. But I will say, and this is what I wanted to get to, is that I am so grateful to everybody who made last night's event happen about the minor master plan. I know it wasn't perfect. I am one of the council members that pushed really hard for us to delay the hearing to September so that we could have time to process and digest, and my council members were all in accord with that. And, and I know that we pushed hard to organize that event really relatively quickly, so you can imagine how many pieces had to move, or maybe you can't. It was, you know, some all-nighters on my part, almost, trying to get some of the pieces in place too, because the staff can only do so much in quick order like that. The Washington Adventist ended up having to give us their tech guy for the whole two hours. We're trying to figure out how to make sure he feels like, you know, our gratitude, and we're just so grateful to them for having opened their doors after three years. We had about 58 people show up. That is a lot of people for anything that has been organized lately. And half of those people, while they may not have been a lot of our residents from Maple Avenue, or a lot of our residents who are people of color, and that is an important stakeholder group, these were important stakeholder groups in, in their own right, all around, they were from right around the area, which is where we really worked hard to flyer. Their homes are being rezoned, many of these folks who showed up. And, and interestingly, this was the first time that they had heard the presentation, which is why we took the time to do that as part of a listening session. The technology wasn't perfect, you know, everything wasn't, wasn't the way it could have been if we'd planned this months and ahead of time, but it was a very, very important moment to deliver information and to hear. We stayed over until, I think, 9:30 last night, those who stayed in formally after, to talk about questions, and people got to talk for the first time sometimes with the And people got to talk for the first time sometimes with the mayor and, and others. And our Washington Adventist, um, colleagues also stayed there and talked to residents, which I think was a really great way to have everyone together. And I'm so grateful to Councilmember Siemens and the mayor for, you know, co-hosting this event and the city staff for being present and being willing to sit there without the county board, who are the, you know, they are the experts on this. But they came anyway to have those relatively informal conversations. And, you know, it, it can be uncomfortable. And yet they, they stayed with us and answered those questions. So I just want to thank everybody for your patience, your flexibility, your tolerance, and keep talking to us. We can keep moving ideas forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hansak. And I just want to say, don't sell it short, right? You did a fantastic job. And thank you so much for all of your work and your leadership in putting that event together. You know, trying to, um, rally and convene and community organize and educate residents around an issue like zoning, right? Who, who wants to spend a Tuesday night after work talking about zoning? But when it impacts your home and it impacts your community and people are aware of, of the potential impacts, they will show up. And so it just means increasing those touches. And as Councilmember Hansak stressed, our appreciation for all of the work that has been done thus far. As I said last night, that wasn't the first door knocking that was done in an attempt to, um, engage and to bring people along. Our, our county colleagues have been working and showing up at every single event possible. They were at National Night Out. They were at farmer's markets. They really were trying to spread the word. But I think now is the time when people are paying attention because we're getting ready to pass a, a, a plan. There's an idea to pass a plan. And so that's kind of, um, galvanizing people, which is, which is a very good thing. And so we have this extra time. I want to encourage everyone to use it wisely. Ask those questions, um, submit your comments to make them a matter of public record. I said it during comments tonight, that I cannot reinforce that enough. If you have comments around a green space that you want to be designated or to ma- remain green, those are the kinds of comments that are really helpful, um, to have in the, uh, as a matter of the public record. It will, county staff will have to reply to it. The planning board will get to see those comments. So it really is a good vehicle, um, in addition to coming to us and the council stating, um, its priorities and its overall opinion around the plan and things that we would like to see modified. But our goal last night was really to help educate and empower people, to really, um, provide those comments and to really state what it is you would like to see in the plan. So I really just want to, um, reinforce and encourage folks to do that. On, uh, the weekend, I was at, in Cambridge, attending the, um, COG Executive Board Retreat. Had an excellent opportunity to engage with, um, council member, um, county council members, members from, um, um, city councils and mayors from, um, in the region. And, um, also, um, county exec, um, Montgomery County Exec Mark was there. So it was a really great opportunity to, um, learn about, um, the state of Womata and what are, and the regional implications of, um, ridership on, um, Womata. And to also talk about economic development and housing from a regional perspective. So I definitely want to send my appreciation, um, to the Chair, um, County Councilmember Stewart, for organizing, uh, that event. It was extremely helpful, um, not only to understand, um, what's happening regionally, but to have an opportunity to brainstorm, um, with other, um, leaders in the area to tackle some hard issues. So, um, very appreciative of being able to participate in that over the weekend. And unfortunately, I will be missing, I will be out of town this weekend. So I will miss the spontaneous play day. And man, I would love to get the popsicles, but I will, uh, thanks, I appreciate that. But, uh, we'll be out of town this weekend. But otherwise, would definitely be participating in those events if I were here. And so with that, I am going to turn things over to, um, Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks, for City Manager Comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, members of the public. Quite a few updates. I'll try to be, um, as brief as possible. Most of them are from Housing and Community Development. The first of which is the, uh, notice to everyone that there will be a tenant opportunity to purchase webinar, um, uh, on August 9th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. This is a webinar that will provide tenants with information about funding for purchasing the buildings they currently live in. The link to the RSVP will be included in the City Manager's comments posted tomorrow. HCD has been working on an application for the Department of Energy and has teamed up with Montgomery County to increase capacity, uh, reach more residents and improve our chances of receiving a $400,000 award. The prize is a multi-year process of conception to implementation of an electrification project that will be easily replicated across the country. Our application was submitted on July 18th. And the department would like to, uh, particularly thank Councilmember Dibala and local residents, uh, Larrie McGilvery and Steve Nadell, or Nadel, for their support. I think we've received quite a few inquiries recently related to, uh, SafeGrow. We have, uh, a couple of responses to, um, some questions that, uh, I think have gone out to individual residents. But as a, um, a general update, uh, the Code Enforcement Division has investigated, nearly eight potential SafeGrow violations this month. And to date, none of the investigations have demonstrated a violation of the city's SafeGrow, uh, laws that restrict the use of certain pesticides in lawn care. And, uh, the Washington Invenis Hospital property, uh, has been, uh, reevaluated and the tax exemptions have been removed. To do so, uh, the state took into consideration the property's age, the condition, and its current vacant status. Washington Invenis may still appeal this decision, but as of now, the new tax, taxable assessed value for the site is $18,697,900. And by my math, I believe that would result in about $100,000 worth of, uh, tax revenue to the city. But I'm sure HCD will confirm that. And, uh, if I'm wrong, I'll give an update to Council. I think we've spoken about the Minor Master Plan. Just as a reminder to folks, there are a number of ways to, uh, provide your comments and to sign up for the, the opportunity to testify at the public hearing. And all of those options and methods will be included, again, in the City Manager's comments posted online tomorrow. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a point for the good of the order.
Sure.
I would just like to say that, um, without the conscientious actions of Arthur, we wouldn't have, uh, probably been encouraged as a city to take this step. And the benefit that it brings potentially to the neighbors and neighborhoods is profound. So it means something that it came out of that process of getting up and walking to that, um, dais and saying something to this staff. So kudos to you.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you, thank you, Arthur. So, we're gonna move on in the agenda, um, and have our presentation, um, from our HCD staff on the Public Space Management Plan. And I'll turn this over to, um, Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks to introduce the team.
Thank you, Mayor. And I believe we have, uh, Acting Director Cowler online with us? Okay. Who will introduce, uh, the presentation as well as, uh, his staff. All yours, Ira.
Thanks so much, uh, Acting Director Ira Cowler, Housing and Community Development, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Great to see you tonight. I just wanted to briefly, uh, introduce tonight's presentation. We're, we are really excited tonight to be, uh, presenting to both council and the community, uh, the draft version of the Public Space Management Plan. This is a, a plan and a process that, as you will hear in Alex's presentation, has been, uh, a long time coming. And we've been working on this project since 2018. Um, and we most just wanna, I just want to quickly thank all the staff, residents, stakeholders who have worked with us throughout that process, uh, to get to the point we are here tonight where we're able to present this draft plan, uh, to you. Uh, just very briefly, as a reminder, uh, tonight, we are not asking for any action from council as part of this. This is, uh, a reintroduction of the draft plan. We want to go over a few pieces of the plan, uh, talk about potential, um, uh, implementation recommendations, next steps, uses for the plan, um, and then give both council and residents a chance to kind of digest the plan over the next few months before we, uh, potentially come back to council, uh, potentially in late October, early November, uh, potentially for a resolution, uh, in support of the plan so we can begin implementing some of the processes from it. Uh, so tonight is just a chance to kind of hear a little bit more about the plan. We encourage everyone to, uh, go to the website, look at the plan themselves, provide us feedback, participate in some of the public engagement sessions we'll be having over the next few months. So with that, I'll turn it, this over to, uh, Planner Alex Friedman to, uh, go over the presentation.
Better? Just gonna share this presentation. There we go. Great. Good evening, uh, Mayor Circe, members of the council. Again, my name is Alex. I'm the planner for the city and I'm excited tonight to be sharing, um, both with you all and with the public, our, uh, public review draft of the Public Space Management Plan. So before I dive into any details about this plan, I think it's important to describe and define what we mean by public space when we start this conversation. As we learned throughout the engagement process with a wide range of stakeholders, the meaning of public space means a lot of things to a lot of different people. But for the sake of this plan, the city defined public space as owned, um, spaces that are owned by the city of Tacoma Park and spaces that are accessible to everyone who lives, works, plays, studies, and prays in the city. These include city parks, sidewalks, curbside dining spaces, um, the roadway from, from curb line to curb line, inclusive of sidewalks and parking spaces within, playgrounds, and many more, um, pieces of the amenities that make up the public realm. What we did not include were, uh, public facilities such as the recreation center, the library, the community center, um, in part because we felt that that, uh, started to take us down a path towards a capital improvements plan or a recreation plan that was, uh, at, at a greater level of depth and a greater breadth of scope than this plan called for. And on top of that, we're actively engaged in redeveloping or updating, um, a variety of those public facilities right now. So what public space policies exist at present? Um, the city currently maintains a patchwork of policies used to manage public spaces. And right now, those policies are spread across multiple departments and divisions, Housing and Community Development, Public Works, the Clerk's Office, the City Manager's Office, Recreation Department. They also take the form of a wide range of types of policy and programming, from council resolutions to city code regulations. There are just sort of, um, uncodified operational practices, planning documents. So all of those exist in this constellation of policies across the city. And by and large, most of those policies evolved over time as, on an as-needed basis. As the city was faced with new issues or new needs, um, policies were crafted to address those. But sort of as a result, um, that has meant that there's been this growing system of policies and practices that were, have never really been comprehensively reviewed and looked at and how they are in relation with each other, um, where gaps may exist and consequently, um, without serious consideration of our equity goals as a city. So the plan that we're looking at before us, um, and is currently available online, uh, on the city's website, the Public Space Management Plan is meant to provide integrated guidance on how public space will be used and maintained in Tacoma Park. It creates a decision-making process for how, when, and where the city devotes funding and resources to public spaces. And it's meant to create a framework with actionable steps to move us forward toward the goals within that framework. It's also important to note that there are a number of things that the Public Space Management Plan is not. That includes it is not a capital improvement plan. Uh, we are not, uh, this is not designed to be looking at, uh, ex-specific budgetary outlays or timelines for projects. Similarly, it's not an acquisition plan. Earlier versions of public space plans, the open, open, open space plans from, uh, 1994 and 2000 largely fell into the camp of an acquisition plan. This is looking at a much higher level framework and giving us tools to think about how to go about acquiring properties where they might be needed, et cetera. It's not a recreation plan. We did not dive into the nooks and crannies of how recreation manages its programming and decides what to do and how. Also, it's worth noting that upon adoption of this plan, there are no immediate code or policy changes. The bulk of the meat of this pl- planning document is a set of recommendations, all of which would have to be pursued, um, individually towards the goals represented in this plan. And many of those things, um, would have to come before the council again, before anything moves forward into plan, um, policy or practice. The plan is also not programmatically prescriptive. Uh, we intentionally tried to keep it at, at as high a level as possible, really thinking about this as more of a framework and an approach to thinking about public space, rather than diving too far down into, um, mandating specific new things that should or shouldn't be, um, created or, or implemented. And, um, there's also, uh, it is not a funded directive. So all of the different recommendations come with different cost impacts. Some cost nothing, many cost something to a lot of somethings. And, um, it's worth noting that in the fiscal year ahead, there is no specific line budget toward implementing the Public Space Management Plan. So as we look at prioritizing which things to bite off first moving forward, that will play out, um, as a impacting factor. And finally, um, I think the Public Space Management Plan, which has had a process that's been drawn out quite long, um, it began to, uh, attach a lot of hopes and goals that it would cover everything, every single little thing that could possibly happen in public space. And, um, it, it both isn't that and it cannot be that. So what we're hoping is that by providing a framework, uh, and a way of thinking about things that we're set up to approach new challenges and issues as they arise, if they're not, um, all specifically categorized in detail in this plan. So as a little bit of background, um, the sort of contemporary history of this plan dates back to November 2018, when the city council approved a scope of work for the new public space, a new Public Space Management Plan. After that, throughout 2019 and into 2020, city staff conducted a variety of internal analyses. These included doing some GIS mapping work, uh, to create an assessment of how proximal residents were in different wards and census tracts to different kinds of parks around the city. We, um, as a department, created our first Streetscape manual, which attempted to standardize the way that the city goes about procuring and identifying different amenities that are placed throughout, uh, the city's public realm. And then also, um, with, alongside that, created a Public Space Amenities Inventory, where there are maps of all of those different amenities as they play out across the community in different places. Also during this time is when the COVID pandemic began. So that really sort of put a lot of, um, it put a pause on the work for a while. And, uh, sort of towards the end of 2020, a community survey was initiated that allowed, um, that invited sort of the first deep public engagement on this plan. And I'll get into the engagement in further detail later. Jump to early summer 2021, um, I joined the city staff. And with that, I joined, um, onto this project. So we jumped in to start looking at where were gaps in engagement thus far and how could we flush those out. In the fall of 2021, we did a Public Space Values Workshop series. But after that, after looking at what we'd gathered, looking at the, um, tools we had But after that, after looking at what we'd gathered, looking at the tools we had at our disposal, we decided that bringing on some level of professional support would be useful for making sort of the best quality plan that we could. So in April, we onboarded CH Planning, a local planning firm, to help us out. They went forward and conducted a wide range of engagement that included stakeholder focus groups and community workshops, a large format community meeting. And then in September of last year, we brought the first draft before the city council for review. Our hope was that a month later, we would come back with a final draft. However, when we looked at the product that we had in front of us and held it up to the goals that we had for this plan, we felt that it wasn't ready yet. And that was also a moment of a lot happening with the city. It was in the midst of city council elections, so there was a lot of other things pulling people's attentions in different directions. And instead of trying to rush a timeline to pass something, we decided to delay its push to the finish line and make sure that it was something that we could stand behind. And so we continued working with our contractor into 2023. CH Planning, the contract was up in June, and that brings me here today. So as far as community engagement on this project goes, there were a number of city council work sessions in 2018, 2022, and 2020. There was also this community survey that I mentioned prior. It was open for a number of months and received 225 responses, which at the time during COVID was was kind of the only way that our team was able to reach out to people. And the number of responses, our team considered to be quite good considering the circumstances. That said, looking through the data of who was responding to the survey, it was very heavily represented by residents from wards one, two, and three, and less so residents from four, five, and six. So looking forward at future engagement, a lot of what our focus was on was how do we engage some of the groups that have not yet been able to participate as fully in this process? In the fall of November, November 2021, we rolled out a series of Public Space Values Workshops. This was our attempt at trying a lot of new things. So it was sort of a pop-up style, hands-on workshop series rooted around an interactive game that we devised in-house. We did the pop-ups in different sort of public locations. We were at the corner of the Essex House parking lot, right at the corner, right on Maple Avenue. We were at Sligo Creek, the park at the bottom of Houston and Kennebec. We were at the recreation center, we were at the community center, and we also did a virtual session. During those sessions, we also tried out, for the first time as a city, live interpretation for both in Amharic and Spanish, and all of our materials were translated into those languages as well. And then, once we had our consultant onboard, there were a number of community, large format community meetings and workshops in the summer of 2022. And they also conducted a number of focus groups, specifically targeting groups that we hadn't heard a lot from, including youth and people who lived in multifamily buildings. So that takes us to our plan. There we go. So the planning document is divided up into a few components. After an executive summary, there's an existing conditions section that digs into a lot of the background on different components of public space throughout the city. There's a review of the community engagement that was conducted. The consulting team included a set of strategies that looked at sort of scenario issues and possible ways to resolve them with some of the recommendations. They included some case studies that they thought would be useful as inspiration for some of the implementation of this plan down the road. And then the real meat and potatoes were the recommendations, which I'll go into in a second, an evaluation scorecard that we developed with the consulting team, and then some appendices that include some extra stuff that we felt like was not essential to have in the, right in the front, but was really useful to include, so we put it in the back. As a quick refresher, because I don't know that this map is visible outside of the plan anywhere, but this is a map of all of the public spaces, all of the public parks, open spaces, and green space that exist in the city formally. On this map, which is pretty small, so I recommend looking at the version in the plan for a higher resolution, closer up view, but the light green represents properties owned by the county, the Montgomery National Capital Parks and Planning Commission. The dark green represents properties, parks and open space and green space properties owned by the city. The blue properties represent facilities, so the community center, public works, rec, rec department, recreation center. And then there is, there are a couple small properties that are owned by the State Highway Administration, but treated like green spaces in the city. Some key findings from all of this existing conditions research were that outside jurisdictions manage a huge amount of public space in the city. Seventy-seven percent of local green spaces are managed by MNCPCC. That's the County Montgomery Parks Department. Those are also spaces that we then have limited influence, direct influence over. All that we do have working relationships with the county if issues or wishes come up for those spaces. Also, the seven largest roadways in the city are all managed by external agencies from State Highway Administration, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, and the District's Department of Transportation. One of the findings that confirmed something that I think our team was already in the know about was that Ward Five had the lowest access to park space and the lowest median income and access to a vehicle compared to any other ward. Ward Six was close behind, and I'll share more details about that in a second. And then it also broadly highlighted a need for a systemic database approach with an equity lens really built into how we think about public space management. So this is a graphic, and I'll take a moment to describe all the pieces of it because there's a lot of information being shared here. This was generated by our consulting team, and it's looking at park, acres of park per 1,000 residents in the city. This is a common metric that's used around the country for measuring, is there enough park space in the city? Within this, this graph is looking specifically at active park space. So there's a division in the jargon-y world of parks between passive parks and active parks. Passive parks are those that don't have formalized activity purposes. So it's, it's just open fields, it's gardens, it's recreational trails. And then active parks are places with like a playground or a ball field or a court attached to them. And while passive parks are really beautiful and important parts of the green space network in the city, also having active park areas so that residents of all ages have ways to physically engage with their space is something that's really important. So in this graph, we're looking at, on the left axis are the acres of park. On the right axis is the percentage of the population. And then the green columns are looking at how many acres there are in each ward. And the black dots are looking at how many, what the percentage of residents in that ward are that do not identify as white or are non-white and Hispanic. So starting with Ward One real, and then I'll zoom over the rest of it. But we can see that Ward One has, compared to all the other wards, the highest access to active park area. However, it also, this analysis looks at neighboring wards as well because we recognize that residents don't just keep to the boundaries of their wards. They probably, it's a small city, they probably walk next door if something cool is there. So when looking at Ward One in comparison with its neighboring wards, its access to active park space is the highest of any ward in the city. But we'll also notice where that black dot is placed. It's also the ward with the lowest percentage of residents who identify as not white or Hispanic. Ward Two and Ward Three have sort of similar outcomes where some park space is available, although it's not very high. Ward Four has this huge columns on both sides because they're blessed with Tacoma Piney Branch Local Park, Hefner Park, and Opal Daniels Park right within the ward. But it's also worth noting that this is where the demographic shift begins. And then we have Ward Five and Ward Six. These are the two lowest park access wards. They are also two of the highest percentages of residents who do not identify as white. And so I think this helps start to paint a picture that there is a disparity in how green spaces are allocated across the city, particularly in the form of active park areas. And this is something that was really held on to as this plan was developed.
Really quick, Alex, council member Hansak has a question.
Since we're looking at this graph, can I just ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
The park area that is referenced by this graph does not include the Montgomery Park land, is that correct? Including even when you're talking about? Yeah. It's not included in this definition?
This is inclusive of, this is inclusive of
The Montgomery Park, like the Sligo Creek.
Active parks. So all of Sligo Creek Park is not counted, just the playgrounds.
Like the playground areas. Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. I was confused by that, I thought others might be.
When you're saying adjoining ward, you're talking about it has to actually be in Tacoma Park in order to be counted in this, right?
Correct. Thank you. So with that background in mind, I wanted to jump into discussing our recommendations. The recommendations for this were guided by three values, three primary values that emerged throughout the engagement process as high priorities, racial equity, environmental sustainability, and safety. These also, staff felt were appropriate goals to include because they also reflect high-level policies that have been passed by the city in recent years and are reflected very strongly in the city council priorities for this current council. Each recommendation within the plan includes a distinction between a lighter lift and a heavier lift recommendation. This is sort of an approximation based on sort of resource availability, feasibility, when the sort of political and logistical context, and cost as far as if these are slightly easier to achieve or slightly harder to achieve. It will also include a description of each recommendation, the implementing departments, the city council priorities from the 23, 24 city council priorities list that may apply, and an estimated cost. The recommendations, I am not going to go through each of them individually, recognizing that there are 37 of them divided into seven categories, budget and funding, community engagement, planning, facilities development, maintenance and operations, programs and permits, property acquisition, and sustainability and resilience. There will be time, and I encourage everyone viewing at home, to take a look at the plan in fuller detail to explore each of these recommendations. There's a summary version as well as the deeper dive version for folks to learn about them. But it's, the recommendations are a really significant part of this report and are the action items that can be pulled out of this to move towards the goals that are represented in this plan. The other important piece of this full Public Space Management Plan is what we're calling a project evaluation scorecard. And the purpose of this scorecard is to incorporate a standardized set of criteria into project evaluation. It also allows different kinds of projects to be compared to each other, which currently we don't have a systematic way of doing. And consequently, we hope that it will be a tool to help in decision-making. So I think an equally important question is how will this be used? And the primary use will be that staff will complete a set of a scorecard attached to every project. They'll be then attached to council cover memos for anything that comes before the city council. But we also will post this on, well, and then we will also post completed scorecards online on project pages so that the public can always go back and check in on sort of what were the criteria that we were looking at for each project. But we also want this to be a tool for city council members. This will be a publicly available blank template available on the city website. Residents are welcome to complete it as they wish. City council members are welcome to complete it as they wish. And we're hopeful that having something that lays out a thought process and lays out some criteria will help when we're looking at tough decisions or places where we need to make prioritizations or trade-offs, that this will give us a tool as a staff and as a council to stand behind the choices that we make. So again, I would recommend looking at the version online for the easier way to process all of this. There's a lot on this scorecard, but this is what it looks like. There are eight categories. And the categories are safety, equity, environmental sustainability, implementation feasibility, place-making, both from a social and aesthetic perspective, connectivity, identified needs, and economic impact. The, each project would run through this and be scored based on the criteria that are listed under each section. Those would then add up to a score, ranking, rating up to three different points. So, but the total score that a project could get if it got perfect across the board would be a score of 33. And that is because the top three sections, safety, equity, and sustainability, have an extra weight added to them. Recognizing that these are high priority issues for the city, we wanted to make sure that there was a way that the projects that pursued these goals were represented more strongly in our criteria system because we also know that the way we design our tools can either sort of further the status quo or we can build in ways to move towards the sort of better tomorrow that we are envisioning as a city, especially when it comes to racial equity, environmental sustainability, and personal safety. So that sort of brings me to, again, sort of how is this to be used? The scorecard will be completed for all public space-related projects. It is well-suited to new projects, especially infrastructure and acquisition-style projects. It is also a tool that we look forward to using as far as budget planning is concerned at the beginning of each year. And then there is an element of, to be determined in that this is a new tool, and we weren't able to steal something from another jurisdiction. We were not able to find an identical tool or approach used by other cities. So we're trying something new here, and because of that, the city is, staff is going to continue testing this tool, creating benchmarks for data that we can look back on and evaluate how it's going and then assess if we need to make any tweaks or iterations on version 1.0. So our next steps, moving forward from here, this is the, I guess, the kickoff to our reintroduction tour because we recognize that since our sort of course-correct last fall, there haven't been a lot of public updates about this project. And so we really want to make sure that the whole community knows what is going to be happening, that this, this planning process is happening and that this is going to be coming before the city council later in the fall. Part of that will include doing a yard sign campaign that's going to put up yard signs directing people to the plan and its details in public spaces all across the city. That includes parks, but also, I'm thinking where there are not an abundance of parks, we're looking just on the side of the road in the green strips and in the plazas where people hang out and near the farmers markets where people congregate on special days of the week. Also, we recognize that the scorecard is a lot to process in one quick go. So we're going to be conducting a few hands-on exploration sessions where we will invite residents and council members to join us, and we'll have some scenarios on hand, and we can just sort of playtest this tool, kind of get a feel for how it works and where it, where it works well. And then also, in this time before we come back to council, city staff are going to develop an action plan that looks at recommendations for Public Space Management Plan that we are able to pursue first, coming right out of the gate upon approval or adoption. coming right out of the gate upon approval or adoption of this plan. And then that will hopefully take us to either late October or into November where we'll come back here for another working session and a voting session. And with that, I encourage folks who are watching at home to check out this plan online. There... It's right at the top of our public space management webpage. Social media for the city is going to be blasting it out. It'll be all over the newsletter and Insider. And of course, I do welcome residents to reach out to me if they have any questions or want to talk about anything that they don't fully understand because this is a meaty document and there's a lot going on here. And we tried our best to work with the consulting team to make it concise and to the point, but there's still a lot here. So I'm always happy to talk and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Great. Councilmember Small.
Thank you. I had a couple of things. The first thing is that honestly, as a person who, like, when I wore this the first time I had on a bowtie, that is a well-tied bowtie.
Thank you.
Honestly, like, the divot and the symmetry is really well done.
Click one?
That's what I...
It is hand-tied, it was hand-tied. I will only come before you with hand-tied bowties.
Yeah, Alex is classy, come on.
Alex, the other thing is if... And this is one of those things, I really don't intend this to be a Kill the Messenger type scenario, but if you could go back through to three or four slides back, I think. Yeah.
What am I aiming for?
Well, let's just go back to the map of the city.
Of the city? There's almost certainly a more efficient way to do this, but I'm worried that I'll break the screen share.
This is groovy. All right. The other one sort of flashes through this part of the process, so if we need to go to it, it's right there anyway. But I'd like to ask about the... Either the nexus between or the juxtaposition of the reality of what this looks like across the swath of the park or even to basically where the Sligo Creek Drive goes through town. And the profound dearth of spaces that are currently even available to be conceived of under this rubric. And I don't mean to... And if you go to, I think it's two more the other way. Forward, I mean. There you go. That was perfect, bad one, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's the computer's a little sticky.
Oh, I'm sorry. And so for this one, obviously, this shows the same thing that I've been talking about and Kara's been talking about and Sarah's been talking about for a long time, Mayor has been talking about it, just based on the hardcore dot placement. And so I guess what I'm curious about is if you could talk a little bit about the fact that there is already sort of an obvious and semi-glaring issue with regard to whether the environment is built or overbuilt, particularly in five and six. And kind of the way two and three are kind of situated is probably not as big or significant an issue. Maybe two more than three, I would think. But when you talk about the built environment being basically concrete and imperious throughout that whole area and then with the streets of impact being large and unwieldy and outside of our dominion, I'm curious about what the sort of forward agenda part of this is from the municipality as opposed to the reality that equity is important and... Because no one had to pay any consultants to know any of that. And so I'm just wondering where we are in that sort of a process.
Thank you, no, that's an excellent question. I think that this becomes a... This plan and this document sort of becomes a mandate for us as staff to start looking at where there are gaps and where there are dearths of access to quality public spaces. How do we add more where we can? And that, in some cases, particularly in Ward six, may require some creativity. But we... So I can say that on my part and on our staff's part, one of the things that we would like to take from this and start looking forward to is not just how do we explore existing spaces, but where are the opportunities for new spaces? And what do we need to do to get to those places? Because we can't, as you mentioned, there's not a lot of vacant land sitting around, anywhere in the city really, for us to scoop up and turn into a park or a plaza. So as a staff, we'll need to start thinking creatively about where do people gather right now, such as the Crossroads Farmers Market? Or where do people gather informally when we look at who's hanging out on different corners or in different landscape parts? And how do we formalize some of those spaces? How do we create spaces out of underutilized public right-of-way? So those are sort of some of the challenges that I'm excited to look forward to.
And then I had one other sort of redirect of implication, I guess, about that. Because this does imply some things about acquisition, but it doesn't necessarily explicitly say annexation, which is historically the province of any municipality that's trying to either get bigger or get more tax base. And so I'm curious about if that is a component part of this. I know that it's not necessarily as relevant to people who are not on the... In the hinterlands or regions where there may be some tangible property spaces that could come into play. But we do have a couple, at least that border Ward six, that could theoretically come into play. And so I'm curious about whether or not that's a component of the way this is being constructed.
To clarify, is that looking at properties within the city or annexation beyond?
No, if you're an annex bar, so then you make the city bigger.
Okay. So I can't speak definitively to that. I feel like annexation would probably be a pretty... It would go in the heavier lift category of things. I don't know that Prince George's County or Montgomery County would give up land very readily. But as something to look at, you know, this is a framework for thinking about how to acquire space if we need new spaces and so...
I would encourage you to look at the MML materials on annexation and what the actual statute says because it's actually technically profoundly easy to do, particularly if there are not a lot of households and the properties are held in concentration because it's all based on percentages.
I'll look into that, thank you.
Councilmember, so I actually do want to pick up where you were going, Alex, in terms of the... First, thank you so much for this. I feel like I've been along for this whole ride of the Public Space Management Plan and to see this, to get us to this point is, I know, has been a lot of work and I'm very appreciative of the team for working with the contractors to get us to this point. And so I have a slew of questions, but I don't want to jump in line. But I do want to piggyback off of where I thought Councilmember Small was going, but you kind of went in a different direction, but I'm catching what you're dropping. Around the point of creativity in terms of the built environment and how we could either leverage through things like partnerships across jurisdictions with the parks to kind of think through. Because one of the things that stood out for me in the... Even if we don't have the money to buy the property, right? But one of the things that really stood out for me in the... In the plan was the reiteration of connectivity to those spaces and in segments of our community where there are fewer and far between, not having those access points to the sidewalks necessary to connect you to the Sligo Creek Park. Or not having that paved path in the parks that would allow you to partake of them in certain parts of our community. And where, because we are cross-jurisdictional in nature, that even if, let's say, there is a park that is being developed in partnership with Prince George's County or Montgomery County in their area, that we are in communication with them because for some of our residents, again, that are on that border, you know, I can easily walk across the street to Montgomery County to partake, you know, to engage or to have a park, or I could walk across the street to Prince George's County. So I do think that in those parts of our community where space is really tight and really limited, we may have to start thinking about how to bridge those partnerships, those cross-jurisdictional partnerships to provide, even if they're border outside of the city, but easily connectable for our residents, those opportunities. And I think that's particularly true for Ward five and Ward six. And so, yeah. And so I will call on Councilmember Fulcher.
Thank you. Recognizing all that you do for the city and not looking to create issues over projects that are in the past, but I would really enjoy seeing a couple different projects or a couple different types of projects that are in the past with your new scorecard system. I think that that would be really interesting to look at and help. Yeah, like, maybe, yeah, like, six different projects, like, two from each sort of category, showing what that would look like would be really helpful.
Yes, that's actually something that I've been talking about with our team as far as... Especially as we're trying to start to create benchmarks for how do you project staff up against each other. I think that's a really great idea.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, Alex, we had a chance to talk earlier, but I wanted to go over some of those things. First of all, I'm... Since I was among some of us, several of us, I presume, were involved in the early stages, went to some of the various meetings and used the evaluation, the valuing that you did, et cetera. But this is a huge improvement, huge improvement over the last version. It has... One of the best things I think about it is that it takes things from a systems approach. And I really appreciate that. We talked a little bit about digging in yet deeper than what you've done, but your systems, you talk about transportation systems, you talk about stormwater systems, we talk... These systems, looking at things holistically is really important and I congratulate you for doing that. Not that we can't begin to add to looking at those systems. And one of the systems that I mentioned to you and your team was our civic infrastructure, which is a system. A term that came, I heard on NPR that struck me was social resiliency. Our civic infrastructure, our... There are so many civic groups that help us use, develop, and potentially maintain or steward our public spaces. We cannot ignore that. To our peril, we ignore our civic infrastructure and the possibility for a greater level of stewardship and engagement with our residents and that they feel empowered to be a part of the solution, not simply a customer. So I wanted to hold that up. With the tool, I have some questions on the tool. And as I had mentioned earlier, I am skeptical or I would encourage caution with any kind of the numerical scoring. What's more important is what's behind the score. In other words, why was that given it a two? So having the proper... Proper isn't the word. Having clear, defensible, you know, evidence for why a given project is more important than the number because somebody else might differ with you or miss the real data and perspective that's brought there and just look at the number. We don't want to gloss over the fact that we cannot come up with any tool that will take out the fact that this is a political decision. These are economic issues. And we, you know, whatever tool that you come up with numbers is not going to get past the fact that we have to make decisions based on resources and competing interests. And that's the other thing I noticed, noted with you all, was that this tool focuses on benefits. It does not talk about trade-offs. It does not. And so that is, I think, a glaring error in the tool that it can't... And you talked, we talked about ways of capturing that. And you were generous enough, and you said tonight that this was a tool that you're open to review. It's a 1.0, whatever. So I've given some suggestions and I think that residents may have some more suggestions and council may have some other suggestions about making the tool more useful and more transparent. So I guess with that, I just want to say that I look forward to being engaged. I'd like to, each ward, to come up with a project, myself. And I'll take some, I think Ward three might be interested. And we... And then that would be another way of comparing different kinds of projects and different ways of using whatever tool we use. I think that that would be an exciting process. I think part of the thing is we do need to experiment. We need to take some chances. And that way, we learn. We're not going to have a perfect, you know, make perfect the enemy of good. So we should move forward on that. I guess with that, I'll just say that congratulations with the work thus far. I look forward to playing a role in its continued development and execution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. I've been eagerly anticipating this report since this is the first time that as a new council member, we get to see all this. I just wanted to, I guess, more comment. I have one sort of question, comment, but the first one is, I... One of the things I really appreciate about this map, you know, the green spaces pop out. The dark green spaces for me on this map pop out as this is where city resources are being expended on our public green spaces. And that's something that as a Ward five resident, you know, has, feels like tax dollars, right? We don't... What we give is a big percentage of our incomes because we are the lowest income per household. And, you know, is it coming back to us in terms of what, you know, what we're getting, right? That said, I have to tell you that being a Ward five resident, you know, you can see we're all more proximate in some ways to Sligo Creek Park paid for by county tax dollars, right? And so there are other ways that the other graph that you depicted could be redone. And I think it might be interesting to see different variations of that graph to be, you know, fair to the green spaces that we get to enjoy. I think the way it's been done now is more of a reflection also of where city resources are being expended, which is very, very important. But there are other ways to look at it. And so when I look at this map and I look at the data that you showed us, I become particularly worried about Ward six in particular because you can see glaringly here that there just aren't any dark green spaces. And you can't see the connectivity that the mayor is speaking of. I think that's what I dream of seeing greater connectivity through these spaces. And I want to give a, for example, on the north end of the city here, right up on the tip there the other day, super busy Flower Avenue, balls are flying out into Flower Avenue, very busy intersection because the children in these very densely concentrated housing units that face Flower, they actually don't have connectivity down to the green space that is not that far away from them. So that gets me to my third point, which is on how... This is where I'm wondering if you've considered... you've considered the degree to which we can activate existing green spaces that are both city and non-city that you didn't include in your analysis that I can tell, such as the Washington Adventist Field, that currently I know residents are interested in utilizing other ways we could partner differently. We have quite a lot of green on the Adventist campus, actually. You can't see it physically on this, but I really appreciate that green space. It's one of the conversations we're having around the MMP and Montgomery College spaces. There's green space on that campus. Our, and, and finally, there are ways to activate the entire county green space that we already have there with sidewalks, with other things, with simple pathways that we could invest in, but also wheels. It might not go into your, your definition of activated spaces, but if the city was heavily investing in learning to bike, having wheels accessible that were low cost, making sure everybody had access to scooters and wheels in, in affordable ways, children were learning to ride, that might be a good trade-off in this domain where we can't necessarily create green spaces out of nothing or without millions of dollars, but we can make programs to take young people out and, you know, partner. So that, that, that active word really caught my attention. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to comment on two quick things. I think that the partnering with private entities is a really interesting idea that is something that we've been thinking about a little bit. In addition to the properties you named, last year I worked as sort of a partner with a Maryland University, a University of Maryland Landscape Architecture class who was envisioning better green spaces around the crossroads. And that started to explore private spaces on some of the large commercial properties right around there, including what I didn't even realize totally existed was a giant green hill right beneath the Aldi, above the Walgreens. So starting to look at spaces like that, that traditionally in the purview of the city has maybe not been totally the focus is something that I'm interested in exploring some more.
The Crossroads Development Association lady has a really good plan already for that, all done.
Yeah, and we're, we're working with Kaylee as well. Yeah, so that's what I just wanted to add.
Councilmember Gibson?
Just wanted to make one other point with regard to this, this map. These are the dark green or city-owned parks, it doesn't make the distinction between active and non-active. So I think that, you know, first of all, that, that is an important distinction because these are underutilized. Wabash Park is underutilized, it's hardly accessible. Dorothy's Woods is not well, well tended. Fortunately, some volunteers have helped tend it. So you, missed opportunities or underutilized city resources is, is, is as certainly important focus as well. And that distinction is not, not captured in this.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it's back to me and I get to ask the rest of my questions, so I'm excited. So there's a couple points that stood out for me as I was combing through the document, the full report. Wasn't it, in, in, in an ideal world, the timing would be a little, it would be better, right? But primarily because we're, we're dealing with the minor master plan right now. And one of the things that we are hearing time and time again are these like micro green spaces that are being used, but not spaces that you would traditionally think of as, as a park per se. Various easements that are kind of serving, particularly in places like Ward Five, where you don't have as many of those, you know, more formalized access to green space, but they're serving as those pocket parks, so to speak. And so in light of the timing of it all, one thing is I think we should definitely try to leverage the comments that we receive from residents on the minor master plan regarding some of these pocket green spaces that they would like to preserve through the lens of, okay, who owns it? I've, I've heard last night, some of them are ours.
That turned out to not be totally true.
Was it not totally true?
Yeah, but it was, it was a well-intentioned mistake, so.
Yeah, but that's okay. It's, it still forces us to kind of do some of, of that legwork, so to speak, to identify some of these underdeveloped spaces, figure out who owns them, and whether or not there's a possibility for us to formalize them into more green space opportunities. I think that that's particularly, I know that, that was definitely and continues to be a challenge in Ward Six, definitely a challenge in Ward Four because there, there really is, unless you are able to reclaim some of these, there aren't that many vacancies, right? And so when they come up or when you identify these ad hoc parks, trying to figure out the right way to keep them that way is going to be pretty huge. Another point is the scorecard idea, which I love. I think it's, it hits on some of the council priorities around addressing issues like our sidewalk petition process potentially. And so I would encourage, in addition to looking at how we could evaluate the merit of a project based on the scorecard, also thinking through, how can we identify need-based projects that wouldn't warrant the traditional resident-initiated effort? I, I think that that's going to be critical as well because if we still find ourselves in a situation where we are overly reliant on residents to complain about an issue, then you will still result, even if you review them on merit, you will still end up with a bunch of projects that are geared towards a certain population. And so there are many residents in some of our more diverse segments of the community that simply are not culturally going to go to the city to complain. And so how can we identify what those sidewalk needs are, what are some of those modifications or park improvements and need-based approaches to identifying the projects? I think that's going to be key in addition to reviewing the merit. So I, I know that, you know, I don't know if that's something that you all have been thinking through, like, project identification in addition to project assessment?
Yes, and one of the recommendations within the, one of the thirty-seven recommendations specifically looks at the sidewalk and traffic calming request processes and trying to refocus them a little bit.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be, again, really helpful because that is a priority for, for council. And I know a number of council members are really interested in seeing us blow that process up to ensure that we're taking a more equitable approach. And then the last little thing that I want to highlight is, this is going to take time, recognizing that, but how can we, in the interim, make sure that some of these spaces that perhaps are not traditional spaces that we have our eye on, we can preserve? And so one of the things that I've been thinking about is as we are working through not just a minor master plan, but what we're hearing, and we heard last night, well, when a development project comes your way, you, what do you, what can you require? What can you do? And so one of the things that I am interested in thinking about is how the city, can we have more formalized approaches to providing feedback and guidance to developers around certain aspects of their projects that are important for the city? Keeping in mind, we don't do the zoning, but if we can, we ultimately don't do the final approval of a project, but we do have control over things like stormwater. We could have some policies on the book that would incentivize or encourage the inclusion of public space amenities and some sort of parameters around what it is that we're looking for in a viable project. And so how can we make sure that we're baking some of those components in so that when, when projects come our way, it's not we're just reviewing it based on the merit? Of course, the minor, the plans and the zoning will dictate a lot, but how can we also make sure that when these projects come along, we're keeping in mind some of the, the needs that have been identified as part of the public space management plan and ways in which we can incorporate it? Really because, again, Wards Five and Six, you have lots of large commercial swaths of, of property. And so how do you figure out the right way to deal with that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just to mention that council does have a role, if you choose, in the development review process. So any project that goes through the planning board gives the council, because of an agreement already in place, a great weight, in your view, so that if council votes on a resolution about a specific project, the planning board requires a supermajority to do something different than Tacoma Parks Council's direction. So there is a role built in, and I think that the opportunity for redevelopment and what the, this plan might offer as a framework to look at redevelopment is really exciting because you look at Ward Six where you have seas of asphalt and new development, redevelopment would require a green space and stormwater management. And not only the things the city has control over, like tree permits, which is another way we protect those green spaces in existence, but then through the development review process, the council can weigh in on particular merits or benefits that you seek.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, again, my thing is about legacy. If we can figure out a way to streamline and make that process, or make those, those criteria, those things that council, future councils would need to keep in mind when they're reviewing a project, you know, making sure that it's not just about, I prefer Chipotle over Taco Bell, but it's more.
I mean, I'm talking about Taco Bell.
It's a good Taco Bell. I'm not, I'm not knocking it, it's delicious. But, but, but the actual, how are we looking at and how are we prioritizing the juxtaposition of public space and, and the use and, and those kinds of things, which I think will be really helpful for this council, but also future councils, if we're able to kind of solidify, solidify something like that.
All right. So with that, I don't see any other lights. I just want to thank you all again for all of your hard work on this. It has been, what, since twenty, I don't, I don't even want to bring it up, twenty eighteen? But it's, it's really good to see the current version of the report. It looks really, really, really good. And I want to encourage council members to definitely send in any feedback that you have on the, on the draft report. Staff will be coming back to us in the fall to discuss more.
And Julie will be on the front row soon about the interim steps that are public facing. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right. So we're going to get ready to move into work sessions. Give folks a ten-minute break?
Yeah.
All right? Awesome. So we'll do, we'll reconvene at nine thirty-eight.
Chart rather that our finance department has put together. And this is something that I think has been helpful to council in the past and a specific requests for future budget amendments. Here you'll see the adopted budget from FY24 per department generally with the expected deficiency in this case, kind of totaling at the bottom. The FY24 net deficiency, meaning excess of revenues, expenses over revenues was about 1.2 million dollars. With the adjustments, the excess in expenditure over revenues grows by, again, about 120,000 dollars to 1.33 million. That said, I'll go into some detail, again focusing primarily on the general fund, after which I'll just open, open the floor for discussion on any particulars that are interest to, to council. I've already talked about, and I'm beginning on the, the first page of either the ordinance or the memo, just again highlighting that there's an increase in revenue of, of 20,000 dollars. Moving on to general fund expenditure, you'll see two additional items highlighted in orange. The distinction of orange highlighted items is primarily to identify things that affect the, the general fund and that are expenditure increases, not just carryovers. So the first two items here are, affect the general fund, particularly the general fund city managers category of items, and they reflect contractual benefits to be paid to former employees that total about 41,000 dollars. Moving on to the next page, you'll see a 48,000 dollar adjustment to public works. That represents a grant program that we began in FY22. Funds have been allocated to grantees and those projects have not yet been completed. They are underway. Many of them are solar projects and the solar projects, the delivery of some of the solar panels, as I understand it, were delayed significantly, which has been the case, I think, for a number of these items. But not only has it affected the city and procuring items, it apparently has also affected many homeowners. And so the grants that we've issued to residents are, we hope to keep active because it is very much in line with the, the mission of the grant. And, and so because we have entered into a contract, we, we would like to extend those dollars another year so that those projects can be finished. There's also a 95,000 dollar carryover for the stormwater resiliency study. That is the program that many of you have, have been involved in with LEDC. And so we started that project essentially looking at the impact of stormwater on some of the city's, I guess not city, it's stormwater impact on private property. And so that program began in, in towards the end of FY23. We're still under contractual obligation and receiving services from that group. We expect the final report to be delivered in sometime in September or October of this year, and so we'd like to carry over those funds. The next two items are from our housing and community development department. The first item for 20,000 dollars is related to a project that was put on hold because of some transitions in HCD. But as you all know very well, the, the, the space just, as you come into the city offices on the third floor, there is a, a space that is largely HCD but also includes some other, other staff from other departments. That space is full of cubicles. And as we begin to hire staff full time and get rid of some of these vacancies, we're experiencing some issues with placing them. And so the, the, these, this 20,000 dollars was purposed in FY23 to redesign and reconfigure that space such that we can get more people in there and adequately provide working spaces for not just HCD but other departments. Again, that was something that was started in FY23 that we hope to carry over to FY24. We have been working with an architect there, developing, we have a scope of work there developing some cost proposals to kind of take us to the next phase. Also from HCD is the renewal of, excuse me, the, the new development of our rental licensing software. This was something that was brought to council, again, towards the end of FY23. We issued an RFP to develop and implement a new rental licensing software. The one that we currently have is very outdated, fairly difficult to use. And so we've identified a vendor, I believe we've entered into a contract, we have an executed contract, and so this is to allow that procurement to continue, that 15,000 Under communications, we have, again, two staff-related personnel-related items. In fact, the, the first three items here are all related to the approved reclassification of our communications manager to a communications director. As you may or may not know, employees and/or their supervisors may issue reclass requests that are reviewed by the city manager's office. They can be reviewed at one or two times, either annually, as a part of an employee's evaluation, or as, as identified. This one has come as there have been significant changes to the role of the communications manager. It is the only department that currently operates without a director. And as that department has grown over what I would say is the last decade, that responsibility has significantly morphed into something very similar to all of our other departments and which are led by directors. And so after reviewing the reclassification, the city manager's office and HR are recommending that the appropriate dollars be allocated to, to make that role a, a formal director's role. And so there's a salary component to that as well as a fringe benefit component. And I'll also note that there is a, we've, we've been able to save a few dollars from the communications department solely as a result of not being able to attend some, some conferences that year. And so the total impact to the communications department in terms of increases to the salary, excuse me, increases to the general fund are about 66,000 dollars. The next section is for our interdepartmental category of, of expenses. And these two, both, both options are related to, both items related to increases in legit insurance that were underestimated for FY23. And so it's about 12,000 dollar increase to just pay for increases to property, all of, it's essentially the, our legit insurance premiums. Legit covers our property insurance, auto insurance, general liability, excess liability. And so those premiums have, have gone up slightly more than we expected for FY24. And then finishing off the general fund with some capital improvement items, all of which are items that have been approved in FY23 or before by council that have yet to be received. I, I think we've talked about this a lot in our consideration of some other procurement items this year. Just at the end of FY23, we had mentioned some advantages to executing a contract prior to entering into FY24 to prevent exactly what we're seeing here. The second of these capital improvement items, as you see, is from FY22, which is the delay of the delivery of five police vehicles. And so the, the four of these items, the first is carryover from fleet camera that is yet to be delivered, five police vehicles, three police vehicles, and then aerial lift, all which have been approved, all of which we've started engaging the vendors for, but have simply just yet to receive the items and then have obviously yet to pay for them. So we'd like to roll those items over into FY24 as well. And I'll stop there. All of our other funds, our special revenue fund is largely grants, doesn't impact our general fund. I welcome any questions about it, but these are all grant dollars. And then our ARPA fund, most of these are carryovers from, excuse me, reallocations for programs that we have underway, generally money that we haven't used in FY23 that we would like to repurpose for the exact same use, but to continue those programs in FY24. The only thing that you don't see in the ARPA fund are some transfers, and you should have, we, we've updated the website to include this, this was a, a late addition, a transfer of 27,000 dollars from one salary line in ARPA to another salary line. That's essentially to allow for our finance department to move forward with a hire that they have had some trouble recruiting for. The transfer of these dollars would allow us to proceed with a temporary hire, through a temporary agency, rather than continue to try to recruit through our typical full-time recruiting process. It is a portion of the money that we're transferring because we do expect to be able to after we continue the recruiting process and, and, and kind of have that, that recruitment open for longer. We do intend to hire a full-time person, but this just would allow us to, to make some progress sooner rather than later. And I'll pause there for any questions or comments about anything.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I appreciate the change in language or syntax with regard to some of the things about carrying over and whatever else, since it, I know it's important to me. So thank you for that, Mr. Small. And you caught yourself once, which is even more impressive. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. One, I want to thank staff for all of your hard work on the budget amendment. I know you've gotten lots of feedback and you've taken that to heart. I particularly get goosebumps with the last table where I could actually see what impact this has on our bottom line of the budget. So this is something, I would prefer for the, the numbers to be black and not red, but I'm, I'm going to take the small wins. One of the, a couple of the, the points that I know residents have asked about is, you know, to what extent could items that we're proposing or projects that we're proposing to continue forward in FY24 could be rethought or reconfigured? And, you know, spent some time with the budget amendment, and it seems like most of these items are mid-contract related things. Like it's not, it's not the case that this is some new project that was never started by staff and therefore we could just decide not to do it. Like some of these were procurements and for one reason or another were just not awarded. Is that?
That's, that's absolutely right. In fact, we, we intentionally structured the First Amendment as such. There were a lot of ideas about excess dollars from, I put excess in, in quotes, from FY23 and, and new uses for FY24. But I think we've, we heard loud and clear and also agree with council that, you know, we have, we, we have other fiscal considerations to take into account. Not to say that there wasn't validity to, I think, some of the requests, but the, the lens that we're using, I think, for, when it comes to the budget is that we need to understand better kind of where we ended the year before proposing anything new. So we, we are very much focused on existing projects that are in some real stage of development. And potentially for, excuse me, the Second Amendment, you know, if there's the realization of any savings, if you will, from FY23, that would be the first opportunity that we would bring any of those thoughts and suggestions to council.
Yeah, that's really helpful. And that second budget amendment, and, and keep me honest on this, is usually when we will have more final numbers because I know in some of the prior or previous budget amendments, there were attempts to try to estimate potential savings associated with like staff, you know, so like hiring delays, which might have resulted in, in theory, unspent funds in the labor category that could potentially go towards some other new project or perhaps our reserves. And so is it my understanding correct that what we're trying to do is really make sure that our balances are, that we know what the actual numbers are, close out the fiscal year before we say what, where, where we stood with, with 23?
That's correct. We, by the Second Budget Amendment, at the very least, we will have officially closed our books and will at least have started the audit. I don't know if we'll be finish our audit by then. Director Chung, I think, can comment a little bit more on that. Director, the other mic.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Yeah, our audit will begin at the end of August and will continue to September, mid-September. And then we will be processing our financial statement, and which is the comprehensive financial statement that we do every single year, and that, that will be actually published by the end of October. So by mid-October, we should have a pretty good understanding of how much that we will be having savings or additional reserve, you know, that we'll be able to find out at that time. So I would say probably by mid-October. So if the, our second budget amendment will begin around mid-October and then will be presented in November, that'll be a best time to know what, what would be our financial effect, you know, of fiscal year 23.
Great, thank you so much. All right, well, to try to make sure that we don't need sleeping bags, I don't see any more lights. And so we're going to move on. Oh, actually, no, I'm wrong. There is another item that I was remiss for not noting. There was, in addition to the transfers that were noted, that Mr. Eubanks noted in terms of the ARPA fund transfers, there was also a budget amendment request put forward by Councilmember Fulcher regarding the public works budget and adding 3,000 dollars to allow for the, having public work staff perhaps needing to spend overtime to continue to participate in community events. The overtime for the community events would pay for a play day, touch a truck, the library book sale, national night out, safe walks to school, and unscheduled request. And so that total is 3,000 dollars. And so I just want to make sure that staff are aware that that is a request that is going forward as, as part of the next iteration of the budget amendment.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure that gets added.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item. So next on the list is recommended amendments to the city code, chapter 6.16 landlord-tenant relations and chapter 6.36 unsafe buildings, public nuisance abatement. Now I'll turn things over to our acting deputy city manager, Mr. Eubanks, to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have our housing manager, Devin McNally, bringing the item forward. I won't spend too much time stealing Devin's shine, so Devin, please take the floor. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmember is Devin McNally with the Department of Housing and Community Development. So as introduced, this, these are amendments to the city code. They're focused on the tenant displacement ordinance, so I'm going to quickly share this All right, so a little bit of background context. This project started, we've recently had two building fires in some of our multifamily apartments. One was in January of 2022, and then the other was in early this year, that led staff to review our city ordinances and policies around tenant displacement. Partially, this was born out of the fact that the current language is a little unclear in the roles and expectations of landlords in relation to kind of providing adequate shelter after a unit has been condemned. In the case of the Mapleview Apartments fire, both the city and the county had to step in, and the city spent around 28,000 dollars helping shelter the residents while repairs were completed. So what staff did is we went and reviewed relevant ordinances in the area. Specifically, we took a long look at the county's ordinance that was passed in 2020 around tenant displacement and built off of that ordinance, recognizing and understanding that with rent stabilization, we have to be understanding of landlords, of the differences in finances, especially given that, for example, the median rent in the city is 1,100 dollars compared to about 1,700 dollars in the county. So being aware of that, but at the same time with the aim of making sure that the expectations of our landlords are clear and that residents who are impacted by unit condemnations or when a building is unlivable have access to adequate shelter. So I'll run through some of the high-level changes. A clean version of the ordinance is in your packet, and you'll see that any deletions or strike-throughs and anything bolded and underlined are, or underlined are additions. So the first part is we're removing the language that currently exists in the code, which exists in chapter 6.36. We are moving it over to our landlord-tenant relations chapter, which is chapter 6.16, and adding a new language. And so we're creating a new section in that chapter titled tenant displacement and relocation expenses. And so once again, the goal there to ensure that tenants are housed, but also provide a clear process for the property owner to follow. So what it lays out is that there's an immediate need to shelter, so it gives the landlord 24 hours to provide adequate shelter in the meantime, and then they have seven days to determine what relocation payment they're going to take. There are three different types. The first is temporarily displaced tenants, so this is recognizing that repairs can be completed within 30 days so that the tenant can move back into the apartment. And so as part of that, they have to cover some of the lodging expenses, storage, and moving costs. The next payment is for a permanently displaced tenant, and we define that similar to the county as anything greater than a month, essentially 30 days. And from there, the payment is the security deposit that already exists plus whatever interest that has accrued under Maryland state law plus two months' rent. At that point, that is the payment. There is also the option for an alternative payment, and that can be at the agreement of the landlord and the tenant. They can come to some sort of arrangement, be that the landlord has another building nearby that they can move them into, anything like that. We do require that it is written down and agreed to, but we would want there to be the option that if the landlord and tenant can come to an alternative form of, of agreement, we don't want to stand in the way of that. There are also some additional pieces in here, which includes the first right to reoccupy for a tenant. So once a unit has been repaired, is now livable again, the tenant has about two weeks to put their interest in to reoccupy that unit. There also is some kind of enforcement mechanisms. So this includes the provision that it is a Class A violation, so municipal infraction, if they don't follow these provisions. And then in cases where the landlord won't cover the costs, the city can step in, cover the costs, and then charge the landlord directly after that we have solved the situation. We also put in their language that the city manager is empowered to waive requirements for this section at their discretion. So in cases in which there might be, you know, arson or something like that, there is some kind of ability for an appeal, but we wanted to make it very clear that it would be a high-level appeal. So this is a work session. We're happy to take any suggestions, notes. What we will do is we'll compile these notes and work on any additions with the city attorney. And when we return for, you know, an introduction and first reading, we would have those redlined. So I'm happy to answer any questions and hear any of your thoughts.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Just for clarification, I did understand that when landlords are looking for housing for a, a tenant who would be displaced for a couple of months, that they would still receive rent from that tenant while they are paying, while the landlord is paying for the housing for that tenant, right?
So yeah, in the case of temporarily displaced tenants or if they're in an alternative arrangement, their lease would still control.
And also, like, if that period of time was just the 30 days and, and the landlord is having to house them, like, in a hotel or something, they're still receiving rent while they're paying for that hotel.
Yeah, and we can add in language to make sure that that's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hansak?
I just want to say thank you for assessing this. One of those fires, as you know, was in my ward, and I know it was a little tricky, and I appreciate how much you worked with our resident and the landlord. I, I was curious how, how much feedback, if any, you have had from some of our smaller landlords in particular on these changes, or if you could, if you haven't gotten direct feedback yet, if there is a plan to get that feedback.
We can plan to, to get some feedback from them. We haven't had any direct feedback from them so far.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, you may have touched on this, Devin. The, in, in two instances, you say, in one case, the HCD director, in the other case, the city manager can waive requirements. What's the criteria for that? I mean, what criteria would the HCD director or the city manager have? Is there something that speaks to that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was an earlier typo, so I apologize for that. The, that was a change. We, in consultation with the city attorney, we changed that to the city manager and not the HCD director. So it's only the city manager that can waive any requirements. The language itself doesn't set forth any specific criteria. It would be on a case-by-case basis, and partially that would have to be that the concern would be in setting too strong a criteria. If an outlier case came up, we wouldn't be able to address that. And at the same time, we also want to make sure that it's not a very common event. The idea would be is that it would be in very, very severe scenarios. So let's say, for example, there was a sinkhole that opened up, then that would be something that might, you know, rise to that occasion. So there isn't set criteria, it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, so it sounds like exceptional conditions that are not, okay, that makes sense. I just, and this is not what you're changing at all, but in looking at the obligation of landlords, basically, I was, maintain all gas, electrical, plumbing, and other facilities. landlords, basically, I was, maintain all gas, electrical, plumbing, and other facilities. I'm just wondering, is AC required or some kind of fan? I mean, given the fact that we're living in an age of global warming, what is the expectation there?
Yeah, so this gets into, and happy to have a follow-on conversation. As part of the property code that we have adopted, we adopt Montgomery County's property code, and so that has to do with temperature regulation. And one of the requirements is that the temperature has to be controlled such that it will not go above 80 degrees, so it can maintain at least 80 degrees or lower Fahrenheit. So that's the enforcement mechanism for air conditioning. Now, as part of adding that in, when the county updated their property code, which subsequently updated ours, they did include language that put it into their version of the landlord-tenant relations chapter. We have not done that, but there still is a requirement that they provide temperature control such that the tenant can live in an apartment.
And then to follow up, there was a question about whether you'd gotten any comment back from landlords. Has this been sent to landlords then?
No.
Not yet, okay. Based, after it gets passed, thank you.
Councilmember Fulter?
I really appreciate the protection that this is giving to tenants because people need housing and need to know that they're protected. But I just wanted you to take a second to comment about sort of the sympathy that you showed towards landlords in a, in a community that has decided that we value rent stabilization, and how you acknowledged the difference between the Montgomery County bill, which exists and was put in from my email with you in 2020. So this sort of protection already exists in Montgomery County, and so can you explain how it's different here than it is in Montgomery County?
Yeah, so the Montgomery County bill, I'll start with a couple of the kind of process changes, which is they have 72 hours to, like, determine a payment, which, looking at it, you know, that's not really enough time for them to even, you know, if it happens on a Friday, there's a chance that they might not get in for, you know, the weekend. So giving them a week to, you know, at least start the process, reach out to insurance, get some idea of what the damage is. In terms of the payment itself, while the temporary dislocation is about the same, in the permanently displacement, the county ordinance requires not only the security deposit, but three months' rent, and it is the greater of their current rent or what is the determined fair market value of the unit set by HUD standards. So in some cases, the landlord would be paying more than they would have received in that three-month period. We have rent stabilization, so that obviously limits the revenue that a landlord can bring in, and so we altered those requirements to two months and only the rent that they are charging.
Councilmember Gibson?
Just one follow-up on that. I raised it, well, at least in my mind, the, does that, that reduction from three months to two months' rent assumes that the tenant can find, can find a rent? And given that, you know, rent-stabilized properties are few and far between, that may be an inaccurate assumption. Just tell me, tell me what your thinking is, I guess.
It's a fair question. I think that what we were trying to balance is a payment that could hopefully allow them to cover the security deposit and the first month's rent of a potential new unit with a higher price, while at the same time being sensitive to the fact that when a unit gets condemned, there's usually some significant work that needs to be done on it to get it back up to code and allow it to be rented out again. And so we were trying to strike that balance between something that is both fair to the tenant and allows them, especially in a, you know, in a permanently displaced, they are making the payment and the lease is being broken at that point. They are moving on to a different unit. And so through that, you know, would allow the tenant at least to have some chance of covering most of the security deposit's first month rent, some moving costs. I'll also point out that, you know, one of the things we do want to encourage with renters is to have renters' insurance of their own, which generally ranges about $12 to $22 a month, and does provide some additional costs or some additional payouts. So this would be to help supplement.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like you're trying to, as you said, balance the situation with both the tenant and landlord, and I appreciate that.
And you actually just hit on my question around the renters' insurance, and because renter, and I should have submitted this earlier, I apologize. Because renters' insurance, in some cases, can cover things like temporary lodging. And so one question I have is how does that juxtaposition work? So let's say I was displaced, I have renters' insurance, my landlord, under this requirement, would be obligated to provide me with some sort of temporary situation because I'm still paying technically rent, right? And so if my, could a landlord in fact say, I am requiring all of my tenants to have renters' insurance, and therefore it is your responsibility, tenant, to cover any temporary housing loss as a result of a fire, for example, through your renters' policy? And then we cover any extended needs after that? Under something like that, under something, a situation, like, is it possible for a landlord to do something like that?
So the intention in kind of writing this was to write from the perspective of if someone, you know, didn't have renters' insurance. That said, I think from a policy perspective, I think it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable request from the landlord to have the tenant take on, you know, the renters' insurance first, and then, you know, help bridge the gap after that. That said, there are always in the lease, sorry, in leases, they can provide certain provisions, including the requirement that the tenant obtain and maintain renters' insurance. That's always, you know, an allowed requirement. And so that would be kind of the ideal scenario where the renters' insurance would carry them for a fair amount of time, and then the landlord could take up the rest of the burden.
And I just want to stress, you know, for our colleagues, you know, these situations have been happening far more frequently than I would like. And in many cases, we're using our emergency assistance funds to try to support the families that are displaced while trying to have conversations with landlords around making people whole. And so I do think that this type of policy not only protects the tenants, but can also help to mitigate some of the costs that the city may incur as a result of providing that, the level of emergency assistance that we've been providing as of late in these kind of cases.
Councilmember Hansak?
I guess I actually wanted to build on that, just without saying too much. I went out to one of these properties, and I think the reality on the ground was such that I was specifically told that in some cases, you know, renters were, excuse me, landlords were requiring in leases that people had homeowner's insurance, and I had several tenants look me in the eye and say, I just, I just never got it. I just never got my renters' insurance. And I thought, gosh, what a predicament for, you know, both the landlord and the city, right, and the tenant, you know, if we don't have these protections. And yet, it is a shame that it falls both on the landlord and/or on the city, right, to make sure that that person isn't left without a home, which is what inevitably did happen in this case. And so I guess I was just wondering if you think there's any additional policy need that we could support to help make that a little bit more robust, give the landlord more power of enforcement? I don't know, is there some, is there anything in that that's missing in the code that we should be seeking to help rectify? Like, like, something, for example, that would suggest that all landlords, not only do we recommend, but that we even require that leases in the city require tenants to hold renters' insurance? And I don't know, we could create a fund or something? I'm just wondering if you gave that some thought.
So we didn't directly consider language to require renters' insurance in leases. We can definitely add in language, renters' insurance can be used in lieu, you know, in the initial payments, and that's very easy language to add in. In terms of kind of overall the dealing with kind of the immediate disparity, I know that we try to, you know, coordinate with the Department of Health and Human Services in cases where, you know, there is a risk of homelessness. They have a robust program aimed at, you know, providing some assistance in the short term and then hopefully rehousing. In terms of that language, we can add in that language and give, you know, write something up related to that. I think that would be part of another section that deals with leases. My only concern with that would be that landlords do have the ability to walk into court to enforce their lease, like any legal contract that exists. It's called a breach of lease process, and I think that it might be better served by doing more education and outreach to landlords rather than maybe writing something into code, because it is something that is available to them. But I don't know if it would rise, but we can draft language to that effect.
Councilmember Small?
Yeah, I just wanted to add quickly on this point, too, that if you were to, if they were to go down that road, then you also, you know, potentially have a steering issue in the long term about who's getting insurance contracts for certain kind. So that would be a factor.
Yes, and I'm also, just to kind of close us out around this point, because it is the fun part about policies is that there are good aspects, and then there can be negative You also, one of the things I'm also mindful of is, you know, particularly in a number of our rent-stabilized units where we have individuals that fall below certain AMI levels, where, you know, that 20 bucks a month, that 40 bucks a month could be challenging. And so I am mindful of the fact that we may not want to create too many barriers for some of our most vulnerable residents that can then be used or leveraged as a way to move forward with certain things like evictions and the like. So I do want to make sure that, while I definitely think that we need to encourage and promote the use of, for everyone to get those, that renters' insurance is more to protect them, and I do think that it would be beneficial in this language that we're looking at right now to kind of make that piece a little clearer, because I could imagine landlords wanting that clarification, or if my tenant has renters' insurance, are they supposed to just cash that out and then I'm stuck paying? So I do think that that would be beneficial. But I do think we would probably need like another work session if we're really trying to focus on how to beef up tenant requirements regarding renters' insurance and other aspects of our code, just so that everyone kind of understands some of those pros and cons. All right, we are cooking with grease. So no more lights. Thank you so much, Mr. McNally, our housing manager, for all of your work on this. I know that this has been something in the works, and I'm glad to see that we're making traction. All right, so next, are you up next?
I think I'm going first, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it back over to you then. Next work session is a contract for the administration of the rental assistance program and the emergency assistance program.
All right, thank you. So last item from me, I promise. So this is a contract with Ministries United Silver Spring Tacoma Park for the administration of our rental assistance program and emergency assistance program. So I'll really quickly describe both of these programs, provide some background and history on kind of the contract itself. The emergency assistance program is the older of the two. It was begun in 2001 with the establishment of an emergency assistance fund by the city to assist residents who are facing emergencies related to high utility bills, foreclosure, eviction, medical bills, and those sorts of things. It has grown over the years, and in 2009, we issued an RFP to oversee and administer the funds, qualify residents. That was one by MUST, and was, they subsequently started administering the program. They were renewed, their contract was renewed through a 2014 RFP. In FY '22, the emergency assistance program with our other community grant programs were moved over from out of the general fund into our ARPA budget, and that is also where we created the rental assistance program. This program was aimed at assisting residents who are facing eviction, apologies, who are facing eviction through failure to pay rent cases. So there had been a case that had gone to court, a judgment was issued, and they were facing eviction based on that amount of rent owed. So that program provides the payment to pay off that back rent owed, some money going forward to help assist the resident get back on their feet and avoid becoming homeless. So as part of that, MUST took over the qualification of residents through that. And so what they do is they provide intake services, liaising with residents, understanding what their situation is. They do qualifications, so they review income documentation, residency documentation, and any other necessary documentation. In the case of the emergency assistance fund, they will cut the check straight out of their coffers and then ask to be reimbursed. And in the case of the rental assistance program, they refer to us to make the payment to the landlord. So in addition, what they also provide to us is coordination and a deep knowledge of the web of supportive services that exist not only in Tacoma Park but in the larger county. So this includes coordinating with the Department of Health and Human Services and their corresponding divisions, the Department of Housing and Community Affairs, which has some money to also help with eviction relief, and then also coordinating with local nonprofits as well. So the contract is in the amount of $100,000 as part of the $250,000 we've allocated towards these two programs. So I'll break it down. The $25,000 is directly for MUST to pay for staff time and associated expenses, and they reimburse us, they invoice us monthly with the staff time and costs that they've incurred as part of running these programs. The other $75,000 are reimbursements that we will do for emergency assistance fund-eligible payments, so payments directly to residents for eligible expenses under the emergency assistance program. So that includes the medical bills, that includes, you know, utility bills, in some cases, you know, purchasing a new mattress when bedbugs occur, those sorts of expenses, and that is for $75,000. So they only receive 10% of the total $250,000 that are budgeted in the ARPA. So, they only receive 10% of the total $250,000 that are budgeted in the ARPA account. And then they provide referrals to us for payments for the rental assistance program, and that program is budgeted for $150,000. So, happy to answer any questions. I know that there's a lot of moving pieces on this one.
Wow. Yeah, so, there are a lot of moving parts. And so I'm trying to just make sure, and I think I get it, but I do want a little bit of confirmation. So, so, so for the most part, and I just want to make sure I have this, this correct, MUST kind of serves as a little bit of a intermediary for us in terms of connecting the people to the funds, even though we may make the payments. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, because it seems like they serve this coordination role in addition to actually making money, like making the payments, and I'm just trying to make sure that I understand how the model kind of works.
I think intermediary would work. I, I think of it as like an extension or of staff capacity. Because if we took it, for example, in-house, we would need someone that would review documents, that would liaise with the various different organizations, that would, you know, intake residents, which we do, but they would have to like sit down with them. It's usually, you know, 30-minute interview, and then document verification as well.
Okay. So, they basically, so they're, they're, it's, I'm using this term loosely, staffing contract to some degree?
To some degree, yes.
But different? Okay. No, that's helpful. And then, again, just to make sure that I'm understanding, because there's a lot of movement in terms of the money. So, the MUST is pay 10% of the ARPA funds, and then they're overseeing the rest of the emergency assistance program where they're providing these payments in terms of utility bills, and then they get reimbursed. So, is it that they're paying the monies to individuals upfront and then we, okay, okay, I think that was the piece that I was missing. Okay. Yep. So, they get basically 10%, basically 10% overhead just to manage MUST, and then the $75,000 is more for the direct payment of, of services to people that they are reimbursed, it's reimbursable. It's not like we're just giving them the money upfront.
Correct. So, they submit monthly invoices, and it includes not only their staff time, but then also what the pay, what reimbursements they're asking for along with supporting documentation.
Okay. Perfect. I think you've clarified it for me. Although, Councilmember Mohamadak.
Well, no, I, I found this most interesting, and maybe I'm, you know, a little bit off base here, but because I'd been puzzling over since I started on council, you know, do we as council members, do you as a housing department, have some arm of the city government that, that provides that sort of social services connectivity? And this is the closest thing I've seen to that, but I guess it's restricted just to does somebody, first the question, somebody comes to you, do they qualify for our rental assistance program or emergency assistance program? Are those definitions of who qualifies for those fairly restricted? I know it's kind of a loose question, but I found the fact that this exists, and I didn't realize that this existed, very eye-opening in terms of imagining some of the questions that I think you've seen us talking about up here about, does the city have this already, this kind of a system of social services capacity to have an entity that refers out to these different services? Is it fairly restricted? Who, who would call it? Like, let me give you an example. Had, had a resident recently that, that lives in one of our multifamilies that had bedbugs. Does that sound like a case that would qualify for this, or would it be like they'd have to come to you looking for assistance with rent or something like that?
Yeah, so, with any case, generally speaking, we, we encourage them to come to us, we can refer them to MUST. Generally speaking, the income limit is 60% of the area median income, so it is aimed at low-income residents. It's not like, it, it is allowable, you know, there are people who meet that definition within the city. But yeah, it's not a program for everybody. And we also-
So, the income, the income requirement is one of the only requirements to be able to, to benefit from MUST, potentially?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that, that example I gave, if that income threshold was met, they might be able to say, get a new mattress through. Okay, that, that's really, really helpful for me as a council member to understand that that exists. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I was, this program is new to me, so I was making a point in my mind to go afterwards, another time, talk with you about it, because I didn't know. Just a question then, if we're digging a little bit deeper into the program itself. So, what, what about repeat requests? In other words, I'm sorry, I, I can't pay my rent this, this month, and maybe next month. I mean, just give me a, if you don't mind.
So, as part of the program, one of the program requirements is that they can and perceive city assistance in the past 12 months. So, we, we generally try to make sure that, you know, they have some path to success, and that is part of the intake interview is, you know, do they have the ability to kind of, once we've corrected this, you know, be successful?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. No more lights. We really appreciate you walking through this. And for members of council, both this item and the prior item will come back to us next week in the form of voting sessions. All right. So, we are going to move right along. And next on our agenda is the work session on the board and committee appointment recommendations. And so with that, I am going to turn the discussion over to our subcommittee on committees, councilmembers Fulcher and Hansak.
I agreed to do the talking for the subcommittee, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. I'm gonna just go quickly through the recommended appointments. Many of them are reappointments, and the list is really long, so I'm going to get started. So, for the arts and humanities, we suggest reappointing Jose Luis Diaz and Rick Henry, and a new appointee would be Joshua Vicki for the arts and humanities committee. For the board of elections, we recommend the reappointment of Ben Bellows, Matt Ling, Joseph Goldman, and there are no new appointments at this time. To COLTA, we recommend reappointing Scott Gilmore, Mikhail Shands, Samuel Bryson, and Jeffrey Hopkins, with no new appointments at this time. To the emergency preparedness committee, we recommend reappointing Chris Beck, Diane Cherry, and Frank Disimo, Disamino. New appointments would be Benjamin Glickstein and Claire Hudson. To the ethics committee, there are no changes at this time. To the grants review board, we recommend reappointing Lucy Moore, Mike Shoki, Shinoki, sorry, Shonky, Jim Sebastian, Derek Xiao, and Mark Schwartz, Louise, Louise Kleese Wallace, with no new appointments. To the recreation committee, we recommend reappointing Michael Arisat, Mackenzie Brown, Ellen Marcus. And for new appointments, we recommend Thomas Radman and Alan Kahn. To the tree commission, we recommend reappointing Xavier Sparrow, and no new appointments at this time. To sustainable Maryland, we recommend reappointing Diane Pickon Men, Men, Many Y. And for new appointments, Emmanuel Wagner and Jeremy Schwartz. For both the noise board and nuclear free Tacoma Park committee, we recommend no reappointments or new appointments at this time, and we need to review the options with council, staff, and the members of those boards.
Thank you. And I do appreciate all of the hard work that the subcommittee on committees has put in on this, and as a former member of the subcommittee on committees, I recognize how challenging it can be, and to try to encourage, and I do want to encourage all of us on the dais to do our due diligence, to really try to spread the word about our committees and to encourage our residents to participate in them. It makes the subcommittee's job a lot easier, and we have lots of, a very diverse pool and lots of residents that are interested in volunteering. Seeing no additional lights, we are going to move on to the next work session item, and this is support for the Benefit Corporation for Africa. And so I will walk us through this one. So, we heard from Taba Buasafa tonight, where there is a request for the city to co-host and support an event in October, the Benefit Corporation for Africa Forum, and the sponsorship would include waiving the auditorium rental fee and providing audio/video support. And so with that, I'm going to actually, I see Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Siemens, if you would like to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I just thought I might give a little more information about the forum. It's called the Benefit Corporation for Africa Forum. It's not a business itself, but it is a discussion, and the purpose is to bring together political leaders from the US and Africa and economic visionaries to discuss a new model for trade relations and help local entrepreneurs, especially within the African diaspora, to learn about a new approach for businesses. The model uses a grassroots approach to import goods from Africa in a manner that bypasses the typical all-for-profit approach, which normally puts the African producers at a disadvantage. The model also provides social benefits in the United States via the Benefit Corporation structure. Now, the Benefit Corporation structure, originally defined by Congressman Raskin, is a hybrid of for-profit and nonprofit companies. Owners of for-profit businesses rightfully expect that their company's solitary goal is to make money. The Benefit Corporation is formed to state goals, with stated goals for making money and contributing to the social fabric of their communities, normally through philanthropic donations to local nonprofits. The African producers are encouraged to invest in the company, so they share in the profits from the products they produce. This forum will help the state to gain business development grants from the federal government. Tacoma Park will gain by again being at the forefront of an innovative socially beneficial project, and by hopefully being a leader in helping develop new businesses and attracting grants from the state to do so. I just thought that might be helpful as my colleagues consider this.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. And again, the, the resolution is, again, focused on co-hosting or lending the city to co-host the event, as well as waiving the auditorium fee. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I just wanted to, the, the description, Terry, about that this is, is not a business, but it's, it's, what word did you use? And I discussed earlier, initiative, and yet you say Tacoma Park residents established, this is in the context of the key issues, established the Benefit Corporation. So, this, some residents established this initiative? I guess I'm not sure what is established.
Yes, it's, it's initiative. It's, this is the second forum that they, that they have held. You know, Taba Buasafa was here earlier, has kind of been the leader on this, but it is not, and it is not an entity. It is not a, a business, it's not a corporation. It's a, you know, he has put together a group of people to discuss and help create the, the idea of how this would work.
I, I think that, 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 that kind of clarity should be reflected here. This is, it's a little bit misleading in, in terms of establish a discussion forum, or I don't know, you know, something, something like that would be clearer to me, because, and, you know, I don't, that seems like a laudable goal. The only other question I have with, with this, besides kind of the language about what exactly it is, is that it, it sort of suggests a degree of expertise that I'm not sure that we possess. I guess we being both the city as a cosponsor and then this Tacoma Park residents. So, the expertise with regard to trade, with trade specifically with Africa, multi, multilateral relations, I mean, I guess I have to take your word for it that this group of residents have that expertise. I'm just not, it's not clear to me whether that's necessary, but it seems to be implied that there is a level of expertise beyond having, creating a forum to discuss this, that, that, that's, that's one thing. So, any of, that kind of clarity would help me.
Sure. So, and Councilmember Siemens, if I may interject. So, it sounds like for next steps, a little bit more clarification that we're talking about the forum itself, and that it is a convening mechanism. And I, I see your point that maybe we're, we're missing a word in that fourth whereas clause in terms of forum, and that the forum is, the forum is designed to bring folks together to advocate for. So, I think that there can definitely be some, some wording tweaks that we don't have to do right now, but can clarify-
Right, I'll just say one other thing, that fourth whereas is the residents of Tacoma Park. I think we're saying some resident, I mean-
Yeah. Nope, nope. I think that that's a, that's a fair edit. We can, we can clarify that. Yep. Councilmember Mohamadak?
Hi, yeah. I, I wanted to share a few, a few thoughts that, that this has brought to my mind, as this is the first time I've sort of thought about some of these issues while I've been on council. They go a little bit beyond this, but they, they made me ask myself a bunch of questions that I thought were important for all of us to reflect on. I guess, first of all, I would just say, you know, as, it doesn't concern me at all that we, that we sometimes waive the fee for our auditorium, seems like a good public service to do for any number of groups. However, and, and we also have a really large and, and very, very vibrant African diaspora here in our community, and, and I think that like any city, we should do all that we can to support the African diaspora community, to bring, to, to embrace the multicultural aspects and the economic engine that we have here in our city. So, with that in mind, some of the questions that came to mind are what criteria do we generally use and historically have we used when we do waive the fee? Just what, what are we applying, just so that any other groups that come before us, we, we have some clarity around that? I think those, I don't know if we have that question answered or already available to us. Another question is, what questions has the city asked itself in the past when we decide to co-sponsor an event, which goes beyond just waiving a fee? Again, kind of what are we standing for? And then that, that brings me to the last question, which is, when and how the city steps out, based on the language that I've seen here in this resolution, on issues that go well beyond our municipality? So, I mean, of course, this, anytime we do a co-sponsorship, I would say, what, what benefits does it bring to the municipality? But, and we could talk about the economics of that, but this is going a little bit beyond that and talking about linking us up to other scales. And, and so I just wanted to share some thoughts that it brought out in my mind that I thought were even relevant tonight. I see we still have someone from our nuclear free committee that's sitting with us, that I, I thought people might find good, as good food for thought for us. It's kind of when, when and how- It's kind of when and how do we as a city step out into the national and international arena on different issues and make statements and clearly try to link ourselves to those? And I came up with about 10 different things. And these are just food for thought as we think forward. Are we going to continue to do these things? Are we pulling back on some issues? Are we purposeful about the group of things on which we step out when we go beyond our own municipal borders? So one is healthy democracy, which I would say goes from national to international. Two is sustainability and climate issues. We're among the top cities in the country at least that is trying to get our city fleet to be electrified. Three is immigration issues. It's a national issue. We are a sanctuary city. Four, we are a nuclear free zone. That goes from national to international, much like I see this resolution. We, you could argue that we have some cooperative business models, our co-op market. That's a systemic issue, but national to international. Six, we make a very strong statement as a city on affordable housing, which is a national issue. We are the only city in the county that has rent stabilization. We have great intentionality about racial integration. I would say that goes up to national level. We are very purposeful about our progressive policing, national. We are very purposeful about our stance on LGBTQ issues, national to international implications. And I don't know if I've missed anything. But I just wanted to share that because it really left, I spent maybe too long thinking about this as I wrapped my head around this. Because this had such a life before I got onto council of 10 years plus. Jamie Raskin's legacy was brought forward here on the legislation he passed. And I'm very proud to be a Tacoma Park resident and know that we have this legacy. But I think we need to sit back a little bit at some point and say, you know, why do we do all of these things? I mean, I think many of us have that question answered in our mind. But what is the array of issues on which we step out? And when do we decide to step out and say cosponsor? What is the statement we're trying to make? And therefore, if another issue comes before us of equal relevance, maybe some other sub-community that we have among us, El Salvador, let's say, or, you know, something else, will we also step out? And therefore, can we ensure equity on these different issues? And will all the people that live among us feel a sense of belonging and as we look at these issues? So I know that's kind of a big question, but it really, it left me doing a lot of internal thinking as I looked at this.
Councilmember Small?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that notwithstanding the validity of any of those points, I just, I think it's important to note the optics of putting the brakes on when the Africans come. And since, you know, we didn't seem to have any problems with any of these things up to this point, now we're gonna be like, oh, well, Africa. So it may not be that, but it is, the timing and the optics are also important.
Can I just say, yeah, and I absolutely agree with you. And I'm new to council, right? So I think the international element actually is what left me really thinking. Because, for example, the, there are issues in the international arena, including the nuclear free zone that have all come before me as on the member of the subcommittee. And we're pulling back from some of that. And stepping into the international arena as a municipality is a big thing. So I think it needs to have a lot of clarity on what we're doing when we step into the international arena and say that when we're citing, you know, what the Biden administration is up to. And I'm absolutely, I think our diaspora community in general should be well supported. We should be equally seeking to do economic issues with some of our Latin American diaspora and some of our other diaspora communities. I'm saying we should be intentional about it. And I'd like us to take a look at this whole array of issues. And I'm not suggesting necessarily that we're stepping back on this. But I think it left me thinking about what are we supporting when we step into these spaces?
I think that's an important clarification. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. And I would just say that, as we have talked about privately, councilmember Hanzak, that this model is something that is right now being developed in conjunction with African countries, but is certainly viable for other countries around the world. I was going to use examples, but don't need to. But we have talked with businesses or people, diaspora members of Latin America and South America countries. So it's, again, it's a huge issue that need to take some focus in the beginning. Thank you.
And I do think that it's important, and I think we're being, I think that we're at a point where there's a little bit of an identity crisis that's happening. We hear it every council meeting. Why are we a city? Why aren't we with the county? Why are we focusing on international things? Why are we doing these things? And I have moments where I'm like, it's because we're Tacoma Park, right? And we have a legacy of innovation. We have a history of pushing the envelope. We have a culture of activism. I don't think the Montgomery County folks could hold us down, right? But I do think that it's important that as we are having conversations like these, and I appreciate councilmember Hanzak and councilmember Small and councilmember Siemens and everyone here that's offering feedback, that we are starting to have some of these broader discussions about who we are as a community and how do we identify ourselves? And what makes us great? And how can we ensure that the work that we're doing and the efforts that we have underway embody that culture? So I appreciate the conversation that we've just had because I think I'm taking it to a little bit of maybe a deeper level. But I think we are confronted with this aspect of who we are as a community and why we exist and what is our role regularly when we have people come before us asking us to do things like, you know, absolve ourselves into the county and things like that. So I do think that we should have some of these conversations amongst the dais to really try to help to not only structure debate around issues, but to also help to kind of push the identity and shape and mold the identity and the character of our community as we're moving forward in the future. Councilmember Gibson?
That makes absolute sense in terms of this, you know, an identity crisis. I guess I would like to say that I hope that this council can challenge the norms. And that's what we're doing. We're challenging at least our perceived norms and other, and some of the residents are questioning that or challenging them too. So I think that's a legitimate thing for a four, seven, new council to do.
Totally agree. Totally agree. All right, so we have one last item, but it's a biggie. So our next item is a resolution designating acting city manager. So we would like to move forward with finally getting rid of a word from Mr. Eubanks' name tag and to confirm Mr. Eubanks as the acting city manager for the city of Tacoma Park. I want to stress that not only has Mr. Eubanks been a steady force during this time of transition, got us through the budget, but he also applied and was selected. And the council has requested for him to fill that role. So the resolution that will be before us next week will be making it official. And it will also, well, it was already happening, like you've already been doing the job. But just kind of solidifying, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. And also, we will have a designation resolution as well just to make sure that for auditing purposes, delegations of authorities are clear. And so I see lights. Councilmember Siemens?
I just wanted to clarify a point of order that you're not gonna let me move this now?
No, you can't. It's next week.
Thank you.
There's a method to my madness. We have two things next week. Councilmember Small?
Yeah, in order to not be overly effusive twice, I'm gonna say more effusive things now about how this is a long time coming, cannot wait to vote in favor of this. And I encourage the acting deputy city manager to conceive of a wide swath in his striking of that middle word.
And so with that, we, I see no more lights. And I will say unofficially, thank you so much, Acting City Manager Eubanks, for all of your hard work. And I also want to thank all of our staff for dealing with transition. I know that transition in the workplace is really hard, is unnerving. This is your livelihood. And I appreciate so much the dedication of all of our staff and your wherewithal as we've been navigating these uncharted waters. So I can't stress enough our appreciation to our staff for all of the hard work that you put in. So thank you all so much. And with that, it is 11:06, and I think we are done for the evening. So do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, second?
Second.
All right. Good night, everyone.